All right, a call to order. The County Placer Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, January 8th, 2013 at 9:00 a.m. We will begin with the flag salute this morning led by me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move to the ceremonial administration of the oath of office of incoming supervisors, and it is my great privilege to have the Honorable Alan Panashi presiding Judge Placer County Superior Court administer the oath today. That will be to the three of us. What I suggest, just for ease of simplicity, is that we do all three at once. If we just come down in front of the lectern, I think I've been corrected that it's a lectern and not a podium, and have his honor swear us in, we'll kick this off. So. Thank you, sir.
If you would each raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Jennifer Montgomery.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and truly
And that I will well and truly.
And faithfully discharge
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Excellent, congratulations, each of them.
All right. So get back to work, ma'am, yeah, sorry. Party's up. Okay, at this time, we will move to our selection of the 2013 chairman and 2013 vice chairman. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Holmes, Jim Holmes, for our chairman.
Not Mike Holmes, no.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Vice Chair, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to nominate Supervisor Durant, Jack Durant.
Not Roberta?
Not Roberta.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Excellent, well, it is my great pleasure then to turn this seat over to our new chair, Chairman Jim, not Mike, Holmes.
Don't go away.
Oh, don't go away.
Go ahead and put your, because we have a little presentation for the outgoing chair. Oh, yeah, I can read.
Really important part.
Okay, we good?
We're good.
There's some cop drops in that drawer if you need them. Supervisor Montgomery, it's my great honor and pleasure to present you with this plaque recognizing your leadership on the Placer County Board of Supervisors this past year. You've done it with grace, clarity, and dignity, and we appreciate that very much, so we just want to present this to you.
Thank you. And I have enjoyed it very much! Thank you!
All righty, where are we here? Now is the time for the statement of meeting procedures read by our clerk, Ann Holman. If you would please do that, ma'am.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of January 8th, 2013. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones and pagers be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. So now is the time for public comments, so if there's anything that anyone wants to speak to that's not on our agenda, now is the time to come forward.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes and board members. My name is Stan Nader. I reside at 2563rd Street in Lincoln. I received an email that Edmund Sullivan would be speaking to you this morning regarding the Hemp Hill Fish Passage, and I wanted to come here in support of his work and to thank the board for their support in allowing Edmund to work on this. It's very important that we maintain and restore the ecosystem that we are charged with overseeing, and so I want to thank you for your support of that. We've seen the fruits of our work with the installation of the fish ladder at the gauging station, and how many salmon got up above that structure this year, and we're at the base of the Hemp Hill waiting to go up even further. So when you have occasion to come across any NID board members, please thank them for the work that they did there and encourage them to take on this Hemp Hill project. We need them to be the lead, and SARSIS, I'm a board member of SARSIS, Save Our Marine Salmon and Steelhead, we have committed $10,000 towards the environmental work for the Hemp Hill project, and so we, as SARSIS board members, appreciate the support that you as a board have given in allowing Edmund to work with NID to see this project through to its fruition, so thank you.
Thank you, Stan. It's a great collaborative project. Anyone else wish to address the board on public comment?
Hello. Good morning, board, and Jim Holmes, Director Jim Holmes, Supervisor Jim Holmes.
Chairman.
Chairman. Okay, I'll just call you Mike.
It's gonna be a long year.
It's the first time I've addressed the board, so I'm real new with this. My issue, as I've spoken with Jim Holmes, is that, Chairman Holmes, that on Irish Lane, damage to the road has been done, and Newcastle Sanitation, Sanitary District, has no full board and no full quorum. They've abandoned, if you will, for better knowledge of what they've done, the project. SP Mud has indicated that they have seen the damage after they have fixed, NSD has fixed the road. It is not done. SP Mud has acknowledged that, but SP Mud has no approval of this project until it is completed. So we are in a quagmire of who's gonna do what when, because NSD supposedly has run out of money. I have to believe that because of the way they've run the board. They had, I think, $4.1 million to work with, and they couldn't earmark $40,000 to fix the road that they damaged with all the big rigs and everything else. So what I would really like to do just for today, to save time, is to request, in the next month or so, that I bring some other homeowners of Irish Lane with me to be on an agenda, and I'm not quite sure what the process is for that except to request it verbally, so
All right.
I don't know if
We need your address. Did you give the address?
No, but I will. Oh, I'm sorry. 8535 Irish Lane, Newcastle.
Okay.
95658. My name is Jeannie, J.E.A.N.N.E., Fritz, F.R.I.T.T.S., and there are five homeowners besides NSD on the roadway that use that as access, and so
Okay, we'll be looking into this. I'll personally come down and take a look at the damage on your road.
Thank you. Will you call me, and so I can meet you?
Got your number.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And congratulations to you all.
All right, thank you. Okay. Any more public comment? Oh, here we go.
Good morning. Good morning, board. My name is Lydia Serian. I'm with Anthem Blue Cross. My office address is 2015 J Street, Sacramento. I'm here, thank you for giving me a minute to talk to you. I'm here to just briefly discuss the transition from DHCS, from the fee-for-service Medi-Cal Managed Care, the, excuse me, the fee-for-service managed, fee-for-service Medi-Cal moving over into the Managed Care Plan in Placer County, and it's mandated by DHCS. Right now Anthem Blue Cross is putting together our request for application and submitting that to the state, and we're seeking support from Placer County for their request for the application. For the past month, we've been working in Placer County and various rural counties in the northern region, garnering support of the providers, of Safety Net providers, FQHC clinics and hospitals. What we found is that Managed Care increases childhood immunization rates, preventive care rates, reduces unnecessary ER visits, and just overall increases the health of the community. So it's important for us to, if possible, get the support from the Placer County Board of Supervisors. I have packets, I'm not sure where to leave them for everybody, and what it includes is, okay, great. Oh, hi, Ann. What it includes is a brief overview of our, the Managed Care Plan that we have in place right now, and a, the template for the letter of support, and a, the advisory committee agreement. So if you could just review that, and possibly we could get on the next agenda and present that to you, specific to Placer County.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board on her public comment? Seeing none, we'll move along to Supervisor Committee reports. Any committee reports to my right? No committee reports. Well, I have a kind of a report. This office, there's a few perks that come with this office, and I'm gonna take advantage of one of those right now since we're on TV. Today is a special day for my family because it's my eldest granddaughter's 12th birthday today, and several of you have seen her, she's come to a couple of the board meetings, so anyhow, since she lives in Southern California, and I won't be able to see her personally, I want to take this opportunity to let her know that her grandmother and I are very proud of her, and we love her very much, and I just want to wish her a happy birthday. Thank you. And now we'll move to the consent agenda. Any items on the consent agenda that board members wish to remove, or any board, any audience member wish to All those, oh, this is a roll call vote? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Euler, Durant
Yes.
Wykan, Montgomery
Yes.
Holmes.
All righty, since we have some time, we'll go ahead and move to the first department item, County Executive's Emergency Services 2012 Homeland Security Grant awarded to Placer County.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, members of the board. For the record, Rui Cunha, Assistant Director of Emergency Services. The item before you asks that you approve a budget revision increasing revenues and expenditures within the Office of Emergency Services in the amount of $317,777 for the 2012 Homeland Security Grant, which was awarded to Placer County on October 12th, 2012. There's no net county cost as a result of this action. Each year, Placer County OES applies for, works with a broad working group with membership from all of our cities, as well as the unincorporated county or fire jurisdictions and so on, to determine and make recommendations to an established approval authority for how these funds are to be used. We've been through that process in relation to the 2012 grant. We have to do that as part of our application process, and so we've established essentially how these funds are to be used this particular year. That's an ongoing process each year. Additionally, OES tracks the implementation of the grant. We close it out at the end of the grant period, and then we participate in the inevitable audits that occur from the feds as we go through the process. This year, the approval authority has awarded funding to training requirements, the Apollo Project, which is a broad project that is supporting information sharing within our public safety agencies. Additionally, safety equipment for law enforcement for our special equipment teams. Additionally, law enforcement, fire, and emergency management communications, and finally, management and administration. So that's primarily where this particular funding is earmarked this year. Just for the board's information on the approval authority as part of that decision process is Sheriff Ed Bonner, back here in the back of the room, Dr. Rich Burton also, Fire Chief Brad Harris is on the approval authority, Police Chief Ron Lawrence, and Fire Chief Mark Reed. It's a great group to work with, and superb leadership in terms of guiding this program each year, so it's an honor for me to work with them. Subject, any questions that any of you might have? That concludes my formal presentation.
Any questions from board members? Does anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for action. Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Director Montgomery?
Yes. Durant?
Yes.
Wykan?
Yes.
Euler?
Holmes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to, oh, yeah, please. And make sure it says Jim on it. Okay, we're moved in. Are you quite done, Supervisor? Oh, okay. We'll move to our Facility Services, item number nine, Placer County Emergency, Children's Emergency Shelter Phase II Recreation and Security Upgrades. Ms. Runholtz.
You're not Joel Swinney, though.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, member of the board, members of the board. The item before you is a recommendation to approve plans and specification and authorize staff to solicit bids for the Placer County Children's Emergency Shelter Phase II Recreation and Security Upgrades. This is located at the Placer County Government Center in North Auburn. The estimate for probable construction cost is $484,000, which consists of $462,000 of an HRSA grant and a budgeted net county cost of $22,000. We're also recommending that you adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services or his designee to award the bid and execute a contract in an amount not to exceed $484,000 with a successful bidder upon review and approval of County Council and Risk Management. Delegate an authority to approve any necessary change orders consistent with the County Purchasing Manual. On September 25th, your board approved a contract with Glass Architects of Nevada City for the design services for this project. This recreation and security upgrade consists of four shade structures, two screen walls, security cameras, and a new HDVR to record those cameras, as well as exterior lighting for the basketball court. The largest of the shade structures, which is in the base bid, is designed to have the same footprint of the original multipurpose room intended for Phase II. This will allow the county to come back at a later date and finish that shade structure as a multipurpose room that will be able to house classes and therapy and various recreational activities and hard activities. The current estimate of probable construction cost for all of the scope is $670,485, $186,485 over the budgeted amount of the original construction estimate. By delegating the authority to award and execute the contract to the director, we will be able to award base bid and the best combination of those alternates to provide the best outcome for the county and the children's shelter. The four bid alternates include the shade structure over an existing place structure, vegetative screening to limit the view from one residence, residential unit to the other. The third is a canopy and table to be used for visitation and outside art activities, and the fourth is seven additional surveillance cameras. In order to proceed with the project, it's recommended that your board approve plans and specs, authorize staff to bid the project, and delegate the before-mentioned authorized to the Director of Facility Services to execute the contract and award the bid. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them, and I ask for your approval.
Any questions?
Yes.
Supervisor Durant.
Got a question, Rob. Thanks for bringing this forward. I have a little bit of a concern here when the project was probable construction cost at $670,45, $186,45 over. What kind of factors went into the fact that it's about 17% over probable construction?
In the development of this supervisor grant, we have 500 and, let me, part of this, $520,926 are from the HRSA grant.
Okay.
And so what we were trying to do is before the expiration of this grant, so that we could utilize this money as to put together a project to expend these monies with some county match. In that effort, we went to Children's System of Care and the shelter and outlined those things that they would like to see happen in a priority, and as we developed and refined the design, the cost for those went higher than what we had originally anticipated. So in order to manage that budget, what we've put forward is a base bid for the high priority shade structure that will later become the multipurpose room, and then the other four alternates in sequence, so that we can best expend the money, the grant money that we do have available.
Okay, so you're starting, you're starting off with a, with the project as conceived, and then you've got kind of a menu of different add-ons that you're going to, that they'd like?
And I would love, love to see the bids come in so that we could award all the base bid and all four alternates.
Okay.
Still, still a good bidding climate, so we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope for the best.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's good enough for me. Supervisor Euler.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jack asked my questions.
Oh, good. So your light's still on? Oh, there it is, okay, bye. All righty, any questions from board members? Anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? And I'll bring it back to the board for action. It's moved and seconded to approve item nine, Placer County Children's Emergency Shelter Phase II Recreation and Security Upgrades. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Runholtz. So I think, do we have time? I think we have time to go to item number 10, Health and Human Services, Environmental Health, Public Health, Animal Services, California Department of Public Health Emergency Preparedness Comprehensive Agreement. Morning.
Morning. Here.
Yeah, it's fine.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. The resolution before you this morning is to accept funding from the California Department of Public Health to continue to improve and enhance Placer County's preparedness capabilities in response to emergencies that may impact public health. This is the second year of funding in a five-year grant cycle. In past years, this funding has allowed the Health and Human Services Department to develop an emergency health alert system, to maintain resources for all of our community hospitals, develop and maintain, implement emergency plans to partner with other agencies in our community, partner with medical facilities to develop a coalition expanding capabilities to handle large-scale incidents, develop and conduct training and exercises to prepare staff and our partners to respond to public health emergencies, help develop the capabilities of our laboratory to identify unknown biological agents and to coordinate with state and federal agencies, acquire, manage, and maintain materials, equipment, and supplies to respond to large-scale incidents, develop and maintain a volunteer group that can be activated when needed, train staff to respond to public health emergencies whenever they may be needed as well. In some of the past accomplishments of note, we received an award from California Department of Public Health for Placer County's actions during the 2011 Lincoln propane fire, received a 90% rating from the Center for Disease Control for plan development and readiness, and received an award from the State Emergency Preparedness Office for innovation in expanding our community preparedness and partners. This year's grant cycle will allow the county to enhance specific public health preparedness capabilities as identified by the Center for Disease Control and enter into an umbrella contract with specific community partners that will ensure adequate services are available during any emergency event, and if you have to answer any questions, you might have
Thank you for that report. It might be important for us to know, I think I've met you, but who you are and what position you
All right, that's right. Wesley Nix, I'm the Director of Public Health, Environmental Health, and Animal Services. Thank you.
Supervisor Euler.
My only question in regard to this item is simply the timing, and I don't recall if last year our board also took action six months into the fiscal year on an item that's, that we're essentially being asked to retroactively approve the agreement. And so educate me as to the reason for the timing? Why are we doing this in January as opposed to our board normally hearing this consistent with our regular budget items?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Euler, maybe they were waiting for me to get here. I can't really answer to that, I wasn't here before, but it is retroactive, so everything would be covered before that, and I think
Doc Burton's here to bail you out.
Doc Burton may be able to
Morning, Chairman. Rich Burton, Health Officer, Director of Health and Human Services. As enthusiastic as we are of having Wes here, we actually didn't wait for Wes to turn this item forward, but the reality is the state delays in processing their contracts is what resulted in us bringing the item at this point as opposed to earlier in the year.
Okay, and so is it simply assumed, because we have a number of partners in this with us, including hospitals, and is it simply assumed amongst our partners that at some point our board is going to take an action that would then allow for this item to be budgeted and therefore any costs to be covered, or because we are, are we in a perpetual state of six-month delay and therefore the funds don't necessarily run concurrent with the fiscal year? I'm just curious as to how we cover that gap during that time.
So I know actually the California Department of Public Health has made great strides in improving their contracting timelines, and so I would hope that, you know, we have every reason to believe we won't be in a perpetual six-month delay process with the state, and our partners have been working with
And our partners have been working with us consistently all along. They're fully aware of the timeline, the constraints we've had, and the delays with the state contracts. So there won't be any impediments in actually implementing what we're bringing forward today as a recommendation.
And so are we assuming then for FY 1314, we might see this a little bit more timely with the conclusion of the fiscal year, the start of the new one?
That would be our expectation.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Any audience members wish to address the board on this item? Seeing done, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
No approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 10, Environmental Health, Public Health, Animal Services, California Department of Public Health Emergency Preparedness Comprehensive Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Mr. Nix. We welcome you to Placer County and look forward to seeing you further.
I look forward to it too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. And now we will move to our 9:30 timed item, which is Personnel Department Service Awards. 61 employees have been invited to our meeting to present it with their animal, annual. Annual County Service Awards. There we go.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. How are you this morning? Happy New Year to you all. And my name is Ann Craig. I'm with Personnel Service, Personnel Department.
Ann, before you jump into this, I apologize, but I know that I can see people out in the lobby, and we've got three rows of chairs up here, one row of chairs here.
Thank you.
We can, we can pause for a moment, let folks come on in and fill these seats down here in the front, and let people that are out in the lobby come on in.
And while, while we're doing this, since this is usually done in the 2012 season, I'm going to allow Supervisor Montgomery to come down and present the awards on behalf of the county.
Very good.
Past Chair Montgomery.
I mean, we've got recipients out there, we've got family members out there. We've got a whole row of seats up here.
Nice catch there, Supervisor.
I don't typically throw things, but.
Sometimes. Question or two.
That's what I'm saying.
Please proceed, I think.
Thank you, Supervisor Yuler. Appreciate you gathering the folks in. Sometime we have shy folks. So as most of you know, every year, this is our 2012 award ceremony with the, for our recipients. And these folks come to us, and the people you see today have 20 years or more of service, and they represent 1,370 years of service to Placer County and its residents. But there are also another group of employees that are out there who have 10 and 15-year awards, and in total, they represent 3,900 years of service to Placer County residents. There's 266 recipients overall. I would just, you know, this is one of the fun things that we get to do as a board in the county to recognize these folks and the years of dedicated service that they have. We also this year have two employees, one in each category of 30 and 35 years of service. And as I was discussing with somebody out there, they started working here before I got out of college. So, yeah, I know. I'm not too far, I'm not, high school, oh bless you. Not too far behind them, but, so. With that, Supervisor Montgomery is going to do the awards with us this year. And your agenda item has the full list of all 61 people that will be coming, but we have some folks who are shy and/or had other commitments and weren't able to come. So I will be trying to also mention their names at the end of our presentation. We're going to start with our department heads today, and our first one, who is getting 10 years of service, is Ken Grimm. And next with probation, our Chief Probation Officer, Marshall Hopper. And we have Kristen Spears, who has 15 years, and she is with our Chief Assessor. And last but not least is Janine Windischhausen, who has 25 years as our Treasurer, Tax Collector. With that, we'll start with our 20-year awards. Okay. Rick Braniki, who is with Admin Services. Glenn Seifert, who is with Admin Services. Ann Hobbs with Air Pollution Control District. Cheryl Standard with County Execs Office. Julie Manning. I'm sorry, Julie. County Clerk Recorder. And Karen Bjork, District Attorney's Office. Brian Bogdan with Facility Services. Linda Battistoni with Health and Human Services. Diane Dickinson with Health and Human Services. Linda Roberts with Health and Human Services. Kristin Shali Madrigal with Health and Human Services. Diana Stumpf with Health and Human Services. Amy Spangler with the Library. Kim Hughes with Public Works. Kevin Taber with Public Works. Okay. Stephen Park with the Sheriff's Office.
Steve used to work.
Yeah, I got us out of here.
We're out of order.
Out of order.
No, it's okay. Okay. Leon Ellis with probation. And those who weren't able to attend who had also received 20-years awards were Andrew Marks, Joni Anderson, Lisa Henon, and, let's see, Donald Hutchinson, John Peretti. So with that, those are our 20-year recipients. The next group are our 25-year recipients, and the first one is Todd Nishikawa from Air Pollution Control. And Sandy, can't call you Sandra, Sandy Bosso from Auditor Controller. And Ann Holman, Clerk of the Board. Nicole Lopez from Risk Management. Paula Shostak from Community Development Resource Planning Agency. Nancy Applenapp from the District Attorney's Office. Tim Stalf, I never pronounce your name right, sorry, Stalfitz, Tim, Facility Services. Cindy Cassidy from Health and Human Services. Wesley Robertson from Health and Human Services. Teresa Mahoney from, hold on a second, eyeglasses again, Library. James Helling from Public Works. Karen Lunn from the Probation Department. Jake Mutcher from the Sheriff's Office. Deborah Smith from the Sheriff's Office. Kathy Finley from the Sheriff's Office. He's from Tahoe. It's a long haul.
Long drive from Tahoe.
Yes. And those are our 25-year recipients, and then there are a few that weren't able to make it. And we have, hold on a second, Roseanne Lingenhofer from the County Clerk Recorder, Holly Cox from Health and Human Services, Nancy Chevro from the Sheriff's Office, Cheryl Duncan from the Sheriff's Office, Carrie Lietzel from the Sheriff's Office, Kurt Walker from Sheriff's Office, and Jeff Osno from Sheriff's Office in Tahoe. So those are our. And our lone 30-year recipient this year. And our lone 35-year recipient this year is Nellie Chennewith, also from Health and And that concludes our list of recipients for this year, for 2012, excuse me. We'll be back again in 2013. And before I turn the mic over, I just want you all to know that there is cake and coffee over in CEO One down the hallway and to your right.
And I just want to say thank you for all your years of incredibly committed service, not just the folks who, who received awards today, but everyone who's here in the audience in support of them. Placer County is an amazing, amazing place to work, and it's truly amazing because of the folks here and the people who couldn't join us today. This whole county revolves around the workforce, and I am impressed each and every day by what an incredible job you all do, and I really want to thank you for that. Chairman?
I couldn't add to that, Supervisor Montgomery, that was well said. And so now we'll let you adjourn to your treats. Thank you all for your service. And we'll give a little break while we. Alrighty, I want to go ahead and call the next item. Item number 10B, Human Services Budget Revision Increase Revenue in HHS Human Services. Ms. Davis.
Yes. Good morning Chairperson Holmes, members of the board. I'm Cheryl Davis from your Human Services Division. You want me to wait one more minute?
Alright, thanks. Alright, I think we can go ahead.
Good morning Chairperson Holmes, member of the board. I'm Cheryl Davis from your Human Services Division. I don't think, I'm dealing with that dreaded mohukus that's going around, so I don't think I would have been able to talk over the crowd. Congratulations, Chairperson Holmes. We are here before you today to ask your approval of a mid-year budget revision to recognize increased state and federal revenues for both our CalFresh and our Mediacal programs. As you know, we have presented several times before that the economic downturn has taken its effect on many Placer County families, and we've had an almost 300% increase in applications for our CalFresh benefits. To be able to serve our families in need quickly, you authorized us to take several actions. One was to aggressively go forward with bringing on a human services center, maximizing technology, moving to a task-based approach, and implementing a call center which is recognized as one of the best in the state now, so that we could serve those in need. And two, to leverage our county general funds to increase our state and federal revenue, so we're not relying on county funds to meet the needs of our residents for federal and state funded programs. We've successfully been able to do that, and that is what you're seeing today in the CalFresh augmentation. By leveraging our county general funds, we now pull those back and have increased federal revenues and state revenues for our CalFresh program. In fact, we're decreasing our reliance over the past three years on county general funds in our budget from 5% down to about 1%. The second request for Mediacal is for a new program that will be coming to our Mediacal program this, actually, a week ago today. The legislature has determined that children who otherwise were served in the Healthy Families Program are now eligible for Mediacal. So we will be accepting about 300 new children into our Mediacal program each month, and then in September, the 5,500 children who are currently receiving Healthy Families benefits will move to our Mediacal program. The Anthem Blue Cross representative who was here earlier was talking, referring to that program. And in an early Christmas surprise to us, the state actually gave us revenue before the start of a program, so that we could have staff to meet the needs of those children that need medical assistance. So today, we are asking you to approve an additional $1.6 million for this current fiscal year for Health and Human Services in the Human Services Division, so that we can continue to provide CalFresh and Mediacal assistance to our families.
Any comments, questions from board members? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 10B, Human Services Budget Revision Increase Revenue in Health and Human Services Budget. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Wykan, Duran, Euler, Montgomery, Holmes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll quickly move to item 11, Public Works, Kings Beach Benefit Assessment District Number One, County Ballots.
Good morning, newly elected Chairman Holmes and members of the board. Peter Kratz here with Department of Public Works to present item 11A. This item relates to eight Placer County owned parcels located in the proposed Kings Beach Benefit Assessment District Number One, otherwise known as the district. Through previous board actions, the district has been considered for formation as a reliable way to fund the operation and maintenance of future streetscape improvements of the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. District formation is predicated on property owners in the district affirmatively supporting formation with a total weighted vote of 50% or more, and your board finalizing district formation and authorizing levying of assessments at the scheduled January 22, 2013 public hearing. Just presenting that as way of background for today's item. There are 294 parcels in the district, eight of which are owned by Placer County, and we'll have a slide here pretty soon that'll show you the locations of those county owned parcels. Each of the 294 parcels in the district has been assessed for the level of benefit it will receive from the streetscape improvements, and the correspondingly fair share assessment each property owner should pay for the operation and maintenance of said improvements. District assessment ballot packages for the 294 parcels were mailed out by the department to owners of record in late November 2012. The ballot package gives notice of the January 22 public hearing, information on the right to submit the assessment ballot, and instructions on how to submit the ballot. So for the eight county owned parcels mailed to Placer County, the department is before you today to request your delegation of authority to the CEO to take appropriate actions that correspond with the board's support, to affirmatively vote on each of the parcels, including casting and submitting the ballot associated with each county owned parcel. The eight county parcels combined total, combined total and is an annual assessment of $3,350.81 or 2% of the total annual assessment of all 294 parcels combined. The department request is based on the necessity for a reliable and long-term funding program to be put in place that will maintain the proposed investment in the project's streetscape improvements for the betterment of the Kings Beach community. As a reminder, today's requested action is distinctly separate from the board's responsibility in relation to the scheduled January 22, 2013 public hearing on consideration of district formation. Following the conclusion of the January 22 public hearing, the board can only finalize district formation and consider levying of assessments if there is no majority protest based on all ballots received. In addition, should the district eventually be approved, levying of assessments would not begin until the project improvements are functional and ready for maintenance. Subsequently, the department asked your board to adopt the accompanying resolution delegating authority to the CEO to affirmatively vote for the eight Placer County owned parcels to support the district. As part of requesting resolution adoption, the following actions need to occur. One, have the CEO affirmatively vote each of the eight ballots attached to the board item, and two, submit the ballots to the clerk of the board prior to the conclusion of the January 22, 2013 public hearing. For the record, today's action is not a project and is therefore exempt from environmental review. And finally, fiscally, the effort to consider formation of the assessment district is part of the $48 million Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. Ongoing services for the proposed district are disclosed in the engineer's report filed with the clerk of the board and are estimated to cost approximately $166,000 per year paid for by assessments applied to each district parcel. As mentioned before, the annual county share would be just over $3,350 or 2% of the total assessment budget. If the project schedule holds, annual assessments would begin on fiscal year 2015-16. At this point in time, the funding source for the annual county share has not yet been determined. With that, I stand before you to address any questions you might have, and just point out quickly what we're talking about here. If I can get my pointer going here. What you can see though is in these shaded areas that have letters A through H, those are the eight county owned parcels in the proposed district of, in Kings Beach Benefit Assessment District Number One, and the correspondingly annual amounts, assessment amounts are listed there too on the slide that range anywhere from just under $200, just $170 for assessment for parcel C, up to as high as over $1,000 for a couple of parcels. And I can talk in detail if you want any information about those county owned parcels that exist today. Thank you for your attention and time.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Peter, thank you for the presentation, and thanks for driving down from Tahoe. I have just a couple of, just quick sort of process questions on this, not related specifically to these eight parcels, but to the 294 parcels. What was the process in advance of mailing out the ballots in November for assessing whether or not a benefit assessment district vote would even go forward at this point? I mean, did we do outreach to the community to determine general levels of support? What was that process?
We did. I think, I mean, just generally speaking, if we go back, I'll go back 10 years. We've always said, and I'll just, I'll just make a point on that, that we've always said the county thinks of this as a big, one of our highest priority projects for Public Works in Lake Tahoe, to deliver a big investment, a foundation, a cornerstone for redevelopment in Kings Beach. We've always said, we'll find the funding, we'll deliver this multimillion dollar investment, the community, we would like the community to step up and take care of the O and M of those, of that investment. We've said that generally speaking at a lot of, a lot of meetings over time. More recently, I would say in 2010, we got a little bit more specific, and we worked with the North Tal Business Association and hire, and they hired a consultant that specializes in what are called bids, benefit, benefit assessment districts, benefit improvement districts, and that was, they studied the idea of what would work best for this community and our project. We in 2011 had a couple of public outreach meetings in December, where again, we worked with the NTBA to inform people about what we thought was best to move forward on this. And then in, just most recently, in May of 2012, we sent out mailers to all 294 parcel owners about what was, what we were proposing to do, and what their potential assessment would be. So that's, that's most recently. We have a lot of information up on our website, so we've directed people most, most recently back in May about the process that we were, wanted to undergo and where we are today.
Excellent. And I really just wanted to get that on the record, because honestly, with the 294 parcels, I've, I've heard from one individual who expressed the opinion that the county hadn't done any outreach on this, and this basically came as a total surprise and didn't quite understand where this was even coming from. So thank you for that.
Sure.
Really, that was just me getting that on the record. The other question that I have is the $3,350 roughly annual assessment related to these eight specific parcels. The county will actually pay that assessment, is that correct? This is, this is not like property taxes where if it's a county owned property, we're not subject to those?
That would be the intent, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my only questions.
Any other questions from board members? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval?
It's moved and seconded to approve item number 11, Public Works, Kings Beach Benefit Assessment District Number One, County Ballots. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And now we'll move to our 10 o'clock timed item. Sorry for the delay, we tried to get some work done through here. This is a Community Development Resource Agency planning. It's a third-party appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit and recommendation for approval of rezone and general plan amendment regarding the Headquarters RV Park. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairmembers of the board. Paul Thompson with Planning Services. This item is a third-party appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit for a 51-unit RV park. It also includes an associated rezoning and amendment to the Auburn Bowman Community Plan. The staff recommends that your board conduct a public hearing and consider this appeal, and here to present this item is Melanie Jackson.
Good morning. As stated, the applicant is requesting the approval of an amendment to the Auburn Bowman Community Plan and a rezone of the property, as well as a conditional, conditional use permit to allow for a 51-unit recreational vehicle park on a five acre portion of the 30 acre property. The subject property is currently the site of the Dingus McGee's Restaurant and previously, or currently, the Raspberry Hill Golf Course and Driving Range. The property is bounded by Interstate 80 to the west, the Union Pacific Railroad to the east, industrial uses to the south, and residential uses and open space to the north. The applicant would like to develop approximately five acres, as stated, for the 51-unit recreational vehicle park. It would include a manager's unit, a general store, on light, excuse me, on-site laundry and bathroom facilities, and it, as approved, would have a, or as stated in the conditional use permit, would have a 180-day maximum limit on stay and a seven-day removal period for the recreational vehicles. This project was taken before the Planning Commission on October 11th of this year, and at the hearing, the Planning Commission heard commentary from the public and from the applicant, and at the conclusion of that, they decided to approve the conditional use permit and adopt a mitigated negative declaration, and would, and decided to approve a motion to recommend approval of the rezone and the general plan amendment to the Board of Supervisors. And on October 22, an appeal was received by the Planning Services Division from Evan and Don McKinney, Ron and Deirdre Conroy, and Diane and Don Tomlinson of the Planning Commission's decision to approve the conditional use permit, to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and their recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. In their, in their appeal, the appellant's contend that there are several impacts that may result from the proposed project, and these include noise impacts, traffic impacts, and impacts to scenic corridor. They also state that the project would be inconsistent with the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, because it would encourage permanent residency with 180-day stay, maximum stay limitation, and because of the rezone and general plan itself. But after reviewing these issues, the staff has concluded that there's no validity to several of them, and as described in the staff report, has determined that the mitigated negative declaration, as prepared for the project, adequately, adequately addressed the environmental issues raised by the appellant's, as well as concluded that the project site is appropriate and consistent with the community plan. So just briefly to go over the proposed zoning, essentially what the applicant proposes to do, currently it's zoned neighborhood commercial with a combining use permit designation, as well as a design review, or design scenic corridor designation, and the applicant would like to modify the zoning itself to general, general commercial zoning as opposed to neighborhood commercial zoning, which is just a slightly more intense use, and then, but also allows for the recreational vehicle park itself. And he would like to get the rez, or have the rezone, as well as the community plan amendment, so that he can reconfigure the open space... so that he can reconfigure the open space and the commercially zoned and designated areas as shown. He would like to move these portions here, these little nodes of commercial, to overlay the area of the recreational vehicle park itself. And it's important to note that there is no net increase to the actual commercial area. And here is the actual community plan, and really, all that's happening here, there's no modification to the designation itself, but just a reconfiguration. So with that, staff would like to conclude their presentation and recommend to the Board of Supervisors that you deny the appeal, uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the conditional use permit, adopt the mitigated negative declaration, adopt a resolution amending the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, and adopt an ordinance approving a rezone of the property. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, Melanie, I just had one clarifying question before we hear from the appellants and the proponent. On page 50 of our board packet, it's actually numbered page four of the document dated October 11, 2012, that went to the Planning Commission. It indicates on that page at the bottom of the first full paragraph that the applicant has proposed that each recreational vehicle will be limited to a maximum stay of 180 days and will be required to vacate for a minimum of 30 days. Was that the request as it initially came in for the project?
As it initially came in, we did not have a limitation on stay or a removal period. After reviewing the project, staff determined that a 30-day removal period was appropriate and the 180-day, and the applicant agreed to that and moved forward with that. And then the Planning Commission determined that a seven-day removal period would be appropriate.
But when this went to the Planning Commission, then the applicant did support the 180 days with the 30 days, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all for now.
Any other questions?
Yeah. And on that same note, and I don't normally get involved in the whole, you know, how a property owner is going to use a property, but seeing that there have been some concerns related to, I think it's a trailer home down not too far from this particular site, how did, what's the justification for the 180 days? As, was that, you know, how did the, how did staff view that? I mean, did you look at it from the standpoint of other, similar situated parks having those types of restrictions? Or, you know, how did you conclude that that number was okay?
We concluded that number was okay by surveying both private and public recreational vehicle parks in California. Public parks were generally around 30-day limitation, whereas private parks, several of them had no limitation whatsoever. And then there was a range of, you know, from two weeks to three months and, as I said, none. So, we had come to the conclusion that 180 days would be appropriate because it's right, it's a number, but it, and it allows him to, or the applicant, to compete with surrounding recreational vehicle parks, but there's still a limitation on the stay.
Okay. Are there any similar parks in Placer County that have unlimited restrictions?
Yes, there are. There's one in the Loomis area, and there's also the KOA, well, what was the KOA on Highway 49, which has no limitation on stay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Ullman?
The county, albeit kind of third-party, is actually in the business of running a park at the fairgrounds. We have spots down at the fairgrounds that, do we have any limitation on stay at the fairgrounds?
From what I understand, there's no limitation on the fairgrounds.
Okay. And the, I'm curious as to what, what the perception of the limitation on stay is to, is to accomplish or avoid.
The limitation on stay is to accomplish, to prevent permanent residency on the site.
Okay.
And that's along with the removal period is to ensure that the recreation of vehicles are operable and can be removed from the site.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
And now we'll hear from the appellate.
Good morning. My name's Evan McKinney. I have to switch my glasses so that I can see. And just to let you guys know, I am extremely nervous in front of you guys. One-on-one, it's one thing, but, you know, being in front of a public group and speaking is difficult for me, just to let you know.
You're doing fine, so don't worry.
You know, one thing, you know, that touched upon, hearing back from the staff, there is a net gain of commercial general zoning, period. It is a net gain because we're changing it from commercial to commercial, from commercial neighborhood to commercial general. So those designations, it's one plus one equals two. We have now a net gain of commercial general for Placer County, period. There's no, there's no way you can get around that. Moving on, you know, the first I'd like to touch upon the zoning, it indicates that the document, the planning document states that the project is within the Auburn Bowman Community Plan because there's no net increases, I just indicated. However, from my understanding is, we are trying not to say, we're going to be changing this zoning today, we're going to change this zoning tomorrow. We're supposed to kind of have, that's what the general plan is to do, is saying, okay, we're supposed to come up with areas that we'd like to see growth in the Placer County and then make adjustments and say, okay, we want to do that for the county for the benefit of the residents here, which we are. And so, you know, my concern is that we're going ahead and saying, we're needed to change this because the applicant said this is going to benefit him. And I think, you know, there is note for us neighbors that are surrounding the neighborhood saying that this would actually be against the Auburn Bowman Community Plan because that's why you have to vote on it today. And we're saying that that's not consistent with the county plan that is currently adopted Based on the general community goal 22, amendments to the Auburn Bowman Community Plan are minimal until such time as the community determines circumstances in the area have changed so significantly that an update to the plan is necessary. Piecemeal community plan amendments should be discouraged. And so that's where we're talking about that. And then, again, in the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, it emphasizes preservation of open space. Moving areas designated as open space and commercial space will degrade the integrity of the open space located on this property. The retention of these areas as open space is a major goal of the plan and is critical of the, to the development of the plan area into a desirable living environment, which we are. Open space is characteristic to the area, which enhances its rural atmosphere. And to me, this is rural, urban encroachment. You know, we're changing that feeling of the neighborhood. You know, when I go by there twice a day at least, you know, I look out there and I say, you know, I look at the people out there golfing, I look up at the Dingus McGee's and saying, wow, they're doing such a great business right now. You know, it's amazing to see, you know, the overflow in parking. And then I'm thinking, you know, now I'm going to be looking at this place, instead of open space with trees, you know, they're going to attempt put a, what I call a shrub screen of trees, which is going to take several, probably a decade in order to become fully mature trees, to hide this RV park. And at the last planning community meeting, the Planning Commission indicated that they would not want to have a completely screened because they would want people to be able to see it and go find the RV park, which, you know, I'm kind of in disagreement because I prefer it to be like the KOA one where you have to go down a side street and then you get to visually see it. You're not seeing all these RV trailers out there. And it's my understanding, to me, it would be a less impact if we could reduce the size of RV park being there if possible and have it within the already designated commercial zoning and place it up there and have a smaller RV park. The land use element goal is further emphasize that the protection of open space, the retention of important open space features is critical to the future quality of life in the planned area. Valuable natural features such as streams and stream corridors, scenic corridors, metal ends, ridge tops, and significant stands of trees shall be preserved and protected throughout the project design. Retention of open space shall be considered in review of all application for the residential developments. And again, to me, it seems like the design is not meeting the residential development Again, the community goal is to preserve natural forms, preserve outstanding areas of native vegetation, including but not limited to the oaklands, oak woodlands. Identified green belts or linear open spaces should be preserved in order to enhance developed areas. Again, to me, by, you can see, they're cutting, doing a cookie cutter to get this project within how many acres that they can fit in there and saying, okay, this is how we want it. And I do understand the area, they're going to be digging out 20-foot, what do they call excavation of 20-foot berms to pull out the dirt in order to meet the ADA compliance for, you know, wheelchair access and stuff like that. So they're going to be significantly grading those five acres that they're out there putting on those pads. And another concern of ours is, and, you know, if the board go ahead and decides, you know, heartfelt, I would love to see this work because I would hate to see in 10 years later, when the economy, whether it goes up or down, go out there and see this asphalt parking of just nothing but, you know, bushes and grass growing up in between the asphalt, as we've seen across the street on the Bowman RV Park. Because once that asphalt's laid, it's really hard to pull back those 50, I believe, trees that are going to be removed to accompany this plan. And, you know, according to the scenic corridor, according to CEQA, based on the Placer Environmental Quality Act, there is a checklist which they did provide, and the CEQA states that the proposed project would be, have a potential significant impact. However, they're saying these things can be mitigated. And that's where, you know, I believe that they cannot be mitigated to the point where they would not have enough impact to stop this. Determination findings that a potential visual impact has significance would be based on a change in visual character as determined by the obstruction of a public view, creation of an aesthetically offensive public view, or inadvertent changes to objects having aesthetic significance. And in this case, it would have an offensive public view. And I was looking at CEQA and how they determine visual understanding of, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different characteristics that they look in CEQA to say, how is this characteristic being done? And one of the ones that really stuck out to me is frequency and duration of view. You know, a lot of people that are going through 80, yeah, they may not see it once or twice in their lifetime, but for me, I'm, like I said, I'm going through there twice a day, so the frequency of me seeing these RV parks, and I don't care what condition is, you know, it would be the same as having a brand-new Mercedes-Benz, oh, God.
Go ahead, you can run your office.
That's not 15 minutes, was it?
Was that 15 minutes? Paul, go ahead, you've got another five.
Okay, well, I have to turn it over to someone else for the last five minutes.
Okay.
So, you know, to me, some of the comparisons for the requirements of the visibility for the scenic corridor are not being met to reduce, mitigate these problems of the visual appearance. The staff report indicated that they were going to go ahead and add these five or 10-gallon trees, and like I said, it's going to take, you know, I can't imagine, you know, oaks obviously are slow-growing trees, but, you know, 10 years, I would think, in order for a tree to get up to a size of 15 feet, which would probably take about what it would to not see those RV parks. Obviously, Musso Road is a little bit higher up than the 80 in certain areas, so we would have more of an impact than the I-80 corridor. All right. I'm feeling pressured now. Okay, the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, Section C, the retention of rural character of the area by minimizing the environmental impact of new development is the primary goal of this plan. The plan's background report describes the designation of various roadways in the plan as scenic corridors. Therefore, you know, I-80 being designated as scenic corridor, and like I said, they, they did have mitigation, and, you know, the planning council at that time said that they didn't expect it to be completely unobstructed and, nor that they were expecting it to be in the best interest of the project, but that's where my concern is. And, you know, I would hate to see this, you know, even if it was a green shrub there, you know, then you don't have the open space that I'm looking at on a day-to-day basis as it is. I think at this point, I'd like to turn it over with my last five minutes, unless you guys have any questions at this point. If not, I can come back up.
We have some questions here, please.
I did, we did meet earlier, and thank you for that. In the meeting we had earlier, I asked if this board were not to move the land uses around the open space and commercial?
Correct.
What would you support on the existing commercial?
I would love to see a co-op grocery store. A co-op grocery store, kind of like in Sacramento, they have the co-op for the natural foods and the owners, the farmers in the area, just like they have the market down Saturday, downtown by the courthouse.
I think more what I'm getting at is, so, so right now, that zoning, that C1, would allow a mobile home park?
Correct.
For example. If the project proponent, if the property owner were to propose a mobile home park for that, since it's currently zoned for that and it would not require moving the land uses, would you support that? Because we can't dictate what use he puts there.
Correct. And, no, I would not support that. You know, I think that that isn't flowing with the community requirements or the needs of the community. I mean, anybody, you know, I have, you know, my parcel is zoned as farm. Does that mean I'm going to put an oil field on it? No, it wouldn't be consistent with, you know, even though it's my private property, it wouldn't be consistent with, I think, the understanding of what Placer wants in this residential area. And to me, it's, it's almost the same thing as, yeah, you know, commercial marijuana at this point. Would you guys want me to see growing me commercial marijuana there and potentially having an impact? I don't think you guys would. To me, I think there, we have to look at the, what the community needs and say, what would best fit this parcel? And, you know, until we can say, you know, and I think there's business opportunities for the owner, and we just need to find that right fit, and I think that would be in the best interest of the county.
And then my other question, just before you turn it over to the next speaker, is, I know that you had tried to arrange a meeting that you had hoped would be facilitated by me, but it was late in the process.
Right.
And one of the questions that you wish to discuss with the owner was potentially purchasing?
Correct.
The property. Have those discussions gone anywhere?
We last emailed last week, and we were trying to touch base, but, you know, with my work schedule and the holidays, we haven't had a chance to sit down, but that is still something that I'd be interested in talking.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Ullman?
Yes, Paul, maybe you can help me with a couple of things. First of all, the assertion that we are expanding the allowable square footage of commercial, where do we stand on that?
As far as the zoning, we are changing the zoning from C1 to C2.
Right.
But as it's designated in the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, whether it's C1 or C2, the designation in the community plan is commercial. So, in that sense, we are not expanding the commercial designation.
Okay. In terms of total net square footage of the two different configurations as it exists versus what's proposed, what are we looking at by way of net square footage of commercial area?
It's the same, as far as the polygons before, polygons after.
Right. So, as I'm looking at those two maps right up there?
It does not increase.
That's the same. Okay. In the C1 designation, what's allowed?
C1 allows for the, actually, mobile home parks.
Okay. What else?
And neighborhood uses.
Could I put a pizza parlor in there?
Neighborhood uses.
Pizza parlor, dry cleaner, those considered neighborhood uses?
Sure, yes.
Are?
Yes.
Okay. Having spent some time out on the site, we have, in our agenda packet, page 65, we have the Andreg map. The topo lines are a little tight, a little hard. The topo lines are a little tight, a little hard to read here, but my recollection from being out on the site is you have fairly substantial slopes from east to west, and that where the commercial is currently placed is at the highest parts of the property, therefore the most visible parts of the property from the road. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And as it is being requested, it takes that commercial from that highest, most visible parts, in a large part, down to what my recollection, again, of being out on site and looking at these topo lines, down to the lower parts, and in fact, in many instances, below the elevation of the road that accesses, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So from a visual impact standpoint, is it staff's opinion that the proposed realignment of the commercial is potentially more impactful or less impactful based on the existing possible uses in a C1?
I would say it's less impacted.
Okay.
Because it's relocating the commercial zoning to a lower area that's not as visible.
Okay. And so today, without going through any of the fairly costly exercise that the applicant has gone through to get to this point, today, the applicant could come in with a request for a bar and a pizza parlor and a laundromat sitting up there on the high ground, visible all the way down to Interstate 80, and there'd really be nothing anybody could do about it much.
Not much, just a design site review approval.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions from Supervisor Grant?
No, I just had a comment. You know, one of the little discussions that was going on with yourself and Supervisor Montgomery was the whole idea that we need to kind of micromanage how property is designed. And I take a little bit of an issue with that, because I think in the broadest sense, in designating certain areas in the county for residential, commercial, C1, agriculture, however, we've actually done that. And I think to go into the weeds and basically say that you can't have, you can't use your property for this use, or you can't use your property for that use, when it's within the scope of commercial, C1 or C, you know, that, I think, doesn't provide a property owner the opportunity to develop their property how they see fit. And, you know, we have to, when someone buys a piece of property, they have to live within, you know, the means that they have, meaning the rules and the laws and the county regulations and California Environmental Quality Act. And once you go through all of that process, that's supposed to vet out whether or not that use is, you know, okay, taking into consideration all of the concerns, you know, the environment and those kinds of things. So, you know, to kind of hear that, kind of being a business owner myself, a law office and now a manufacturing business, you know, it just kind of, you know, I kind of step back and say, wow, what's going on? But I understand what your concern is. But for me, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of we're going from commercial to commercial. And that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at right now.
I understand.
Yeah, thank you.
You did very well.
Thank you. And one just quick thing, you know, we just, my company just purchased a building, and, you know, we're going through the planning department in Sacramento City, and, you know, they're coming up with very specific things as well. And they are micromanaging us. They are saying how we have to have the monitor, what they want on the surrounding trim around our thing, they're talking about paint colors. And so, you know, I think that there is an aspect in the planning commission that is supposed to be doing what is best for the community. Because they're saying it has to, not only, they really say, okay, you guys are an environmental company, you're doing this work, but they're saying, how does it fit within this neighborhood? And that's what we're saying here. How does this fit within this neighborhood? And that's all my point of view is on that.
All right, thank you. And then you had someone that...
Yep, thank you.
Shall we give them the full, yeah, we'll go ahead and give them the full five minutes.
Hi, I'm Deirdre Conroy.
Hi.
Trying not to shake.
Your honor.
Trying to be nervous. I feel calm, but yet I'm shaking.
Yeah, okay.
Fifty-one weeks a year. That's what this really, as far as the length of stay, that's what it really is. Because it's six months in with one week out, and immediately you can do another six months. That's 51 weeks a year. That's how long someone could stay as this is proposed. That's effectively permanent residency. It's not a short-term vacation plan. I tried to find some studies, found a couple. A Harvard student, graduate student, did a study of sustainability at RV parks in 2010, and it was stated there that the average RV owner travels between 26 and 35 days per year. That's it. This was supported by an earlier University of Minnesota study, which suggests that an uninterrupted six-month stay is excessive. It's not needed for your average vacationer. At this point, I want to address a question I think that came up about Placer County and their length of stay at the fairgrounds. Evan had done some research, and according to his research, the length of stay there is 14 days in any 60-day period, not an unlimited. The same study also stated that 10% of RV owners use their RV as their primary residence. And that's really one of our major concerns, that the individuals in need of such a long stay may be limited to those who use their RV as their primary residence. Tom Gonzer, who is chairman of the RV Owners Advisory Council, wrote an article titled, "So You Want to Build an RV Park," in which he stated, "Long-term guests may simply be looking for a, quote, 'housing solution' that will last as long as possible." He categorizes parks as either overnight or destination. Overnight being described as those located adjacent to high volume of existing RV traffic, such as along an interstate. This proposed location clearly meets his definition of an overnight park. It's not a destination. I know Mr. Reese has attempted to defend the long length of stay by using, for example, Caltrans and highway construction as an example of a need. The state of California posts those policies, those reimbursement policies, online. I looked at it, I didn't see anything in there that would incentivize a worker, a state worker, to use an RV park, either their own, or, I mean, their own RV or to rent an RV. They're reimbursed for their actual expenses, so they would stay in a hotel and be reimbursed for all those expenses. This proposed RV park is not in a prime vacation spot. It's between a freeway on-ramp and a busy railroad line. And it's not just a railroad line where the train goes through, it's a railroad line where there is a crossing. So it's the horn repeatedly. It seems unlikely to attract vacationers in need of a long-term stay, rather will attract those who are looking for an inexpensive place to live in their RV. If these excessively long stays are allowed, the RV park will almost certainly take on the character of a trailer park. Musso Road, as has been mentioned, is already burdened by a trailer park that continues to exist in really deplorable conditions. We don't need another one on the same road. 51 weeks per year is just too much. With a maximum average RV vacation of 35 days a year, a limit of 60 days per year would accommodate the majority of legitimate vacationers and eliminate the risk of the property becoming a permanent place to live for those RV owners without another permanent residence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for, can I see them? Thank you.
I guess I can stand up now?
You want to provide comment on the item?
I'd like to comment on a little bit, yes.
What I'd like to do is have the applicant make, you know, make his presentation, if there is one, and then you can, then I'll open it up to the general, to the public.
All right. I was going to be fast.
Okay, I know you are. You okay?
Sure.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. Michael Reese, Old Wood Site Construction, for the record. First and foremost, I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for coming out to the site. That was much appreciated for your investment in time and to look at the project and get a full feel for it.
Time's up.
Time's up. Wasn't sure where that was coming from. I believe staff has done a very good job in regard to going through the project. It's been, I should say, vetted pretty well, I think, at this point. And again, I think they've done a very good job in presenting the project to you today. In regard to length of stay, the Placer County Park does have daily, weekly, and monthly rentals. They have some people that have been in there for a couple of years. There's one point that I just do need to clarify, though, that Melanie said. Apparently during the fair, they have, I guess, the guy said, a clear-out period that they clear out during the fair. So this is a point of clarification on that. So this is actually, that came from the manager of the park that I spoke to yesterday. So, and then also in regard to length of stay, I think in your packages that I gave you earlier, there was reference made to the Good Sam representatives from Northern California. And there's a letter in your package that they had visited almost 400 RV parks in Northern California, and none, none of the private parks had any maximum stay requirements. And probably most importantly, too, is the KOA write-down, or the Auburn Gold Country Fairground, or Auburn Gold Country RV Park. That does not have a maximum stay requirement either, and that's my main competitor. The other two parks in the area, the Bowman Park and the park at the end of Musso Road, both of those are in the process of being cleaned up now, which is a, which is a very good thing for all of us. So I've cut my remarks down quite a bit, but I think that's really about it. It's just hope that your board will approve the project with, same as the planning commission did, with the 180-day maximum stay and the seven-day removal period, out-of-period. And along with, there was also conditions, I think, 53 through 57, which also provide for making sure the park does not turn into a, to a mobile home park, which none of us want, that's for sure. With that, any questions? Otherwise, I'll go sit down.
Supervisor Yuler, you have?
Yeah, my questions are kind of lending themselves to the questions I asked staff earlier in regard to project visibility. And to you as the property owner and as a businessman, it's simply, it occurs to me that if I had a property similarly situated where the existing commercial zoning, where it's located, actually had visibility all the way down to the freeway, I would be seeking to maximize the visibility of those businesses and associated signage, so that folks, not just on the road that they would take to get to my place of business, but also on the freeway going by, would be able to see my businesses. The kind of use that you are proposing, it would seem to me, not being an active RV-er, but it would seem to me, the kind of use you are proposing, for a park to be successful in this area, you would want to minimize, not so much the visibility from the road onto the property, while that's desirable, but for the benefit of the people renting spaces at your park, you want to minimize visibility from the park to the freeway, to the road. You want to minimize the noise intrusion into the property to provide for a more quiet experience for the people there. So I'm assuming that it is your intent, based on what I've seen of the proposed screening, the associated signage for the park and all the rest, that really your intent is to minimize the visual intrusion that would otherwise be allowed today under your current zoning and provide for as much screening as possible for the benefit of the residents of this park.
Agreed. Agreed. Yeah, I mean, with the commercial zoning up higher, you definitely have more and more visibility. Dropping it down, I think, as Paul pointed out, you know, really reduces the visual for both parties. And I think that's beneficial for both parties, is that, you know, I don't want my clients at the RV resort to be seeing the freeway. I also don't want those RV units to be right next to the railroad, in case something were to happen there, too. And then finally, again, because I spent so much time out there trying to design it, one of the reasons for pulling back from that area is also that's where one of the largest approved septic areas, too. And that's one thing that I do not want to run short of, is septic. So I have enough for my project, I have quite a bit for backup. And that's, was, that probably was the biggest design factor for me in setting up the project.
I guess my point simply is that the concerns that I've heard at this board level and that I've read in the packet are the visible impacts associated with this kind of a park and what folks are going to be subject to driving by. And everything in me as a businessman says, the impacts of developing the property as it exists visually would be far greater than what it is you are proposing with your project.
Absolutely agree.
Supervisor Grant?
Yeah, just a couple of follow-up questions. You know, we've kind of dealt with the visual aspect. Hypothetically, even if, you know, there were, there was a propensity for folks to stay, you know, the whole 480 days, and they had a vehicle that wasn't up to snuff, or wasn't, you know, looked like a nuisance, or wasn't kept well. We have certain codes in the county that would, that would deal with that issue, right?
We have the conditions of approval that outline, you know, the length of stay, you know, that the vehicles have to be in operating condition, that they have to be currently registered. And if the applicant were to violate those, they would be in violation of the use permit and potentially in danger of getting that revoked or modified, so.
And from what I understand, you know, our law enforcement is very keen on these particular places. And I know when I went on a ride along with the sheriff's office, the deputies knew exactly where the problem places were. So I'm going to assume that they will keep a fairly decent eye on any activity, or if it gets unkempt, or, you know, becomes a problem, that we have county remedies to deal with that.
We do. And we also have the neighboring residents, too, that are going to be watching that.
And as a business owner, you're aware, sir, of those...
Absolutely.
Of those requirements, right?
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on both Supervisor Duran and Supervisor Yuler's questions. I'm going to start with Supervisor Duran's. There have been issues with mobile home parks, not RV parks, but mobile home parks in Placer County, and we have, to a certain extent, had our hands tied because of the state responsibility for mobile home parks. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Does the state have that same level of responsibility for RV parks, or is that really truly much more directly related to county responsibility?
County responsibility.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that there truly was a difference between those two. Supervisors Yuler's questions and comments about the visual screening, I think, are really germane, and Mike and I have discussed these, because that was one of my real concerns when, on the multiple occasions that we've spoken. And, you know, how could we address these if we did address these? But before I even get to that, is there, because we've talked a little bit about a sign, is there a sign that is part of this proposal in front of us today, or is that for a future decision?
There is no sign permit application at this point. I would imagine, though, the applicant will be requesting a sign.
Okay, but today, a discussion of a sign, or, you know, what you do and don't see from the freeway in terms of signage is not germane to this conversation.
It's not a part of this application.
Okay. I think when we, you know, I was sort of amused when I heard that the planning commission said, oh, well, I think people should be able to see it, you know, because otherwise people won't know it's there. I think the planning commission is sort of operating under an old paradigm. My parents have an RV, they travel a lot, and they have a GPS, and they use MapQuest and Google Maps, and they don't look for a sign. You know, that's not something my parents would even think about looking for, and they're 80. You know, they're probably the classic RV travelers. So I agree that it's probably more of a concern for the project proponent to screen the actual proposed park from the surrounding environment as a business decision. So, Mike, you and I have discussed, you know, sort of fully screening, and I'm not sure what the orientation on this map is, but fully screening along Musso Road, and then also fully screening along, is that the north, up there at the top of that sort of hammerhead shape?
Yes.
And is that something that you're still willing to do, is to fully screen?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I think, I think... Because I think, I think the neighbors are quite right in the concern about what would the visual impact be on them. Having said that, I did drive down this morning and came by this area at about 5:30. I've drive down at least four days a week, so I pass this twice a day, four days a week. I agree again with Supervisor Ulller that actually relocating the commercial would tend to create less of a visual impact because it basically takes it down into a declivity instead of having it up on the hillside where it is now. Melanie, can you talk a little bit about if this board were to leave the commercial where it is now, what would it mean in terms of tree removal and grading as compared with making the change requested?
If it were to remain where it's located, the commercial area, there would be more significant grading and more significant tree removal, because a lot of the trees on the site are concentrated in those existing commercial areas, and those are also the seaper portions of the property, so there would be significantly more grading.
I think that's it for now, but thank you.
Supervisor Wiggan?
Does anybody know applicant, appellant, or staff, there must be industry standards as relates to percentage-wise, how many of these things, how many of the sites turn over quickly, as what's the average day, and how many people stay for, how many would be expected to stay for the full 180 days, et cetera? Any?
It's all over the board. It depend on the location. If you have some areas that are, for example, the public parks and high-demand areas, those will turn over every seven days. As far as my RV resort, I would think that I'll have, you know, one night stay, two-night stays, and then I'll also have some of the longer-term stays, for somebody who wants to come for a season or two, whether they're their visiting family. I've gotten a lot of feedback on that. The RV park in Roseville, one of their long-term stays, and one of the reasons they went to a long-term stay, is one of their customers was undergoing chemotherapy, you know, next to the hospital, and that was a good alternative for them to be there in a part-time. So I don't know that there is any real industry standard, so it's, because it's so dependent on location, the individual park, and what the amenities are there. And I'm trying not to sidestep the question, but I just don't have a real positive answer for that.
Thanks. Anybody else have any observations, anything, Auburn Fairgrounds, or?
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, board members? And I, I'll just ask, as far as this issue of permanent residence, I'm sure there are certain signs that you would see from your visitors about establishing permanent residence. For example, if they started putting a canopy up for their car, or a little fence around their unit. You would not allow that, I'm sure.
No. And specifically, there's conditions, I believe it was 53 and 57, preclude those type of, how shall we say, improvements?
Yeah, okay, that's fine, that's all.
Okay.
Supervisor Wiggan, did you have another question? No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, sir, you can come forward.
My name is Steve Cale. I've lived in the area for a long time. And right there at that stop sign, where you take a left onto Musso Road there, when there's a trailer there and a truck, it's going to be like, say, 35, 40 feet long, out on the freeway right there, you've got a stop sign there, too. How's that, it's going to jam up the whole intersection right there, the congestion right there with them, with them RVs in that area right there. It's a congested area to begin with. I definitely oppose the whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
But the congestion is going to be really rough right there for everybody who lives around there, and it's going to be hard on the traffic coming off the interstate.
So you're speaking from westbound, coming westbound?
Yeah. Yeah, where it turns right into, over to Musso Road, you know, you're going to have a 30-footer, a 40-footer sitting there, and nobody can get off the freeway that way, and plus coming from the other way. Plus, we have a cul-de-sac, we have a dead-end street on the other end. We don't need them coming down there and making a big circle down there, parking alongside the road. Am I talking too loud?
No, you're fine.
And congestion and bothering the people that live there. You've got the trailer parked just down the road there, and believe me, the police are there every other day.
Yeah, it's been a mess.
And I know this is an RV. Far as I'm concerned, same thing. Put a Christmas tree farm in there. Let's do something a little different. It's too crowded there to put an RV park there. That's all I got to say. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
You're welcome.
I hope that you make a change here today and vote this thing down.
All right, thanks. Anyone else wish to address the board?
Hi, I'm Jan Muff. I'm also a resident out in that area. And first of all, I want to say thank you to Jennifer Montgomery and others who have really supported our efforts, those of us who just purchased the summit, 3,000 acres up at Donner Summit. Who would have thought that could have happened? So I'd really like you to entertain that option of us having a chance to purchase this little five acres, or whatever the people that are in owning it want, really want to sell, make a profit on what they own. I understand that. I would like to ask Melanie or whoever on the staff to clarify the statement that they made when they said the appellant's concerns have no validity. I'd really like those itemized and specifically addressed, because just to throw that statement out as a generalization, that kind of bothered me.
Do you have any specific?
No, she didn't specify. She just said the appellant's concerns have no validity. The staff deemed that they had no validity, and I'd really like her to clarify that.
Okay. Paul, you want to tackle that?
What Melanie Man is, is that we have analyzed the applicant's concerns. We have addressed those issues in the staff report and found that, you know, the existing mitigated negative declaration does disclose, report all the impacts of the projects, and that where the impacts are potentially significant, they have been mitigated to a less than significant level. And with the mitigations and the proposed recommended conditions that were approved by the, recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, we support that.
So those concerns were addressed in?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak on this issue?
Good morning. My name is Dawn McKinney, also a resident. I just wanted to say that not only will the reconfiguration of the commercial space compromise the integrity, the continuity, and the visual appeal of the open space as it exists now, the commercial rezoning will significantly alter the character of the community. The quality of our rural lifestyle in our area will most definitely be affected. The area where we live, which does back up to the property, is zoned rural residential. Adding an RV park by rezoning neighborhood commercial to general commercial land to the area is urban development. The RV development would significantly alter the character of the area by increasing the neighborhood population and urbanization. We have approximately 19 residents out there versus to add, the RV park would add in another 51 transient residents. The character of the neighbor would be, neighborhood would certainly be changed, because most of the residents would, by a ratio of two to one, would outnumber us, two, two to one of transient residents to permanent residents. I think that this is contrary to the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, because the plan emphasizes preserving the current character, rural character of rural areas. Quote, "Preserve and maintain the rural character and quality of the outlying areas. Factors that contribute to this rural character include the predominance of native vegetation, both lower oak grasslands and mixed pine forests, and openness." The D emphasis on urban-type improvements, that's in Land Use Element Goals Section M, which is echoed in the Land Use Element Goals Section E and Community Design Goal H, which says, quote, "Maintain the present character of established residential areas." I would also like to quote from the Auburn Bowman Community Plan in Section 2B, the planning principles. The first item is urban sprawl would result in the loss of sense of community. That has resulted from the relatively small-town atmosphere, which fosters social interaction and common interest. The character of the Auburn Bowman community will be threatened as well, should growth continue to spread throughout the foothill area seemingly without boundaries or limits. The RV park would urbanize our rural residential area. I don't think that it's a good fit for the area, especially with Auburn Bowman's Community Plan emphasis on preserving open space and preserving the character of rural areas. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Diane Tomlinson. And people have given you all the facts and quote this and that, let me give you a human perspective. I was born and raised in this town. I came home from the hospital to the land I now live on. You're trying to change that land? It's family land that we've had since 1948. It was zoned in a specific manner to keep a specific plan there. When I was here, 6,500 people lived in the Auburn area, and now we have 20-some thousand. I know that urban sprawl is going to go wherever, and it can go other places, and you can do what you want to do with it, but we don't need more big city. We have open spaces, again and again, mentioned in the plan, not gated communities, open spaces, not RV parks. If he has to develop this, then develop it where it is. We can't fight that. Develop it where it is. We all had, when we purchased our land, we all knew what we had going. We all knew that we had this protection supposedly, and we all purchased or developed our land with that in mind. And now he wants to change the rules. That's not fair for any of us. I also am a business owner, by the way, in my home. Nobody knows that because I don't put out signs and I haven't redeveloped. I had the opportunity to redevelop my grandparents' 27.7 acres, and I chose to keep it in line with the community as it's existed for my whole life. We have the responsibility to keep that division where it is in line. If you want to develop the highland, go ahead. Don't put it at our eye level, which is where it's going to be. You develop that into the lower areas, oh yeah, it's eye level, it's not above us. If we choose to keep our eyes on the road, if it's developed above us, that's one thing. Don't put it at our eye level. Every day we go by it. Thanks. Oh, one more thing. If people want to have unlimited stay, there are places very close by where they can have that. We don't need another unlimited stay or long stay.
Hi, I'm Dawn Tomlinson. And a lot of the issues have pretty much been covered. This is not just the voice of a few of us. This is from everybody that lives out there. We've spent a lot of time talking to everybody and finding out their concerns. And as my wife had pointed out, the visual from the intersection, if they bring it down to eye level, then we see it more every day as an impact than we would if it's put in a back. Those lines were drawn for a reason. I'm sure there was a lot of investigation done when they did it. They zoned it a certain way, and for him to be able to build where it is now without changing anything, it probably won't perk. That's probably the reason they did this. We have a very sensitive water table out there. We're going to put that at risk if we put something this big in there. It's a big concern of mine. I mean, I had to go 500 feet to get good water. I know everybody else out there is all on well. As far as enforcement, to our understanding, yeah, they have people that enforce it, it's complaint-driven. The sheriffs, I know the sheriff's crews, they patrol, they watch the area, they see the riffraff, but unless there's a complaint filed, nobody enforces it. They don't just cruise it to look to see if they're staying. That's going to put the burden on us, on the community, to watch this. That's not fair to us, either. And if we flip this zone, he knew the rules when he bought it. We knew it when we moved in. It's zoned this way, this is what you can and can't do. Why change it? If we change it now and allow a change like this, we're going to open the door to what? What's next? Oh, well, that one went through, now we'll put something else through. That's going to destroy our whole community out there. I think that's my point.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Can I make a quick comment? The gentleman?
Sir, Mr. Tomlinson?
Just, just a quick comment.
I'm sorry.
Because you, that's right, you raised the point of, I'm sure they drew the lines this way for a reason. I was actually here when we adopted the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, you're right. We did draw the lines that way for a reason, because it maximized the visibility of that commercial area to both the freeway and the road. That was why the property owner requested it be put up there at that time. So it was all about maximizing the visibility of that commercial area by placing it up there.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, you can see it great.
You're right, there was a reason.
But the other limitations is in, you know, okay, if we flip it around, and now I can put in a bigger septic and put the water table at risk? Uh-uh. I don't think that's fair.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or good morning. Ron Conroy, I live in the area. And I agree with a lot of everything that was said, because we've all gone over it. We met a couple, three times and went over things that were said. And contrary to what the staff report says, this does go against the Auburn Bowman Community Plan and the IAD scenic corridor. And I won't go back into that, because I've, it's pretty much already been over that. Mrs. Montgomery did say something, well, what would you like there? How about leave it a golf course? Maybe something we could do is put a 25-unit RV park up above. Yeah, you're going to cut down trees, but a lot of those trees are digger pines, not oak trees, so, and it'll be visible from the freeway. I'm very nervous, too, as well. And leave it as a golf course, because that's a low-income golf course. I mean, it's easy to play, it's only $12, $15 a round, so there's not a lot of those out there. They're very expensive. But that's about all I have. I just think it needs to be smaller, 25 units, not 51 units with a laundry, a store. Who knows what's going to happen with the store when that gets put in? That's about all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to, oh, come forward? Anybody? How many more people want to speak? Okay, three more? That's fine.
Good morning. My name is, or, good morning, yes, my name is Randy Dawson. I live here in Auburn. I, for full disclosure purposes, just wanted to state, I used to own the Headquarters House Restaurant. I operated it from 1994 until, I think, 2002, converted it to a special event center restaurant to a wedding, and then operated the golf course. Basically worked 14 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm no longer out there, simply because I could not obtain refinancing to pay off a balloon payment that became due, so I got foreclosed on. So for me, 18 years of my life resulted in zero. My investors, many who are in the mid-'80s, have lost substantially, and we're dealing with those issues as we speak. Basically, we're broke. Now, I wanted to tell you that, simply because I know this property intimately. I operated it every day, and I can answer any question you have about what's going on with the property, or what zoning intentions and everything else. What I did want to state was, after I'd lost the property, I leased it back for one year. Mike was talking, Mike Reese was talking to me about putting in a mini-storage, and I suggested to him, gosh, don't do mini-storage. Do something that's got synergy for the balance of the restaurant, for the golf course, something that would work. I said, how about an RV park? Because my plan was to do just that. Now, the RV park I had intentions on was maybe 25 units. It was on the semicircle to the left, could be constructed in such a way that you wouldn't see any of these units from the freeway, regardless of what, you know, you're believing, Supervisor Ulller, about the visibility. You could put that in the, you know, southwest area. In addition, there's land that's leased from the railroad also. I used to lease from the railroad, it's there, it's a couple acres, would be very useful for something like additional RV, and very flat, very usable. So I had suggested that. Mike went to the county all excited, thinking, well, maybe so. He came back, and basically the comment was, wow, the county is willing to take that commercial zoning that's not being used and allow me to move it most anywhere on the property. I said, really? I didn't know about that, because I'd never applied for anything like this. I hadn't tried. And I said, well, that's kind of interesting, and what I'm noticing now, and in all fairness to all these people who are here, and that's why I came down, I read all the different comments, all the different issues that are going on about this, and basically, it seems like planning, the planning department already has an agenda. And regardless of what these people are saying... And basically, it seems like planning, the planning department already has an agenda. And regardless of what these people are saying who live around the property, their concerns aren't being listened to. They just aren't. They raise issue after issue and it always comes back insignificant. So, I'm saddened for that reason. I'm saddened I haven't suggested the RV park at this point. Because I believe it could be done, but why not 20 to 25 units? It could be put in there beautifully, would not impact any of the neighbors. So it's really a financial issue of why 51 units, 125 would work. I think more time needs to be spent in really analyzing that, in my opinion. Short of that, I, again, I know the property intimately. My concern would be, one of the trends for RVs, RV parks, is that the project is approved, 51 units, and what you then do as the owner, you simply contract with an RV manufacturer. Let them come in, lease them all your pads, they use it as a place to put all of their particular RVs and lease them out. That's a new trend I've been reading about in RV parks. I would be concerned about that. And it doesn't appear to be any mention to how that would be, would that even be permitted under the circumstances? You're all thinking, these are just people who are going to drive in their fancy coaches and have a nice place to stay. And perhaps that may not be the end result of what you're anticipating. So?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Any questions at all?
A couple of comments, and I hope you don't take this the wrong way, but, you know, part of the responsibility to ensure that property is used, you know, we dot all our Is and cross all our Ts, and that falls on us. You know, it goes through review, it goes through MAC, goes through Planning Commission, comes to the board supervisor. So, you know, I just want to clarify that, you know, I think we've done, and have done in the past, a very good job of listening to concerns. And I want to kind of parse out residents not getting their due versus not getting the decision that they want. You know, there's a big difference. You know, I think all of us are more than willing to sit down and talk to residents, both on either side of a project, and try to find out what the actual issues are and try to work through those and make suggestions. You know, with regards to this particular situation, I did meet with the folks that were in opposition to it and suggested that they might want to sit down and talk to the project proponent and see if they could come to an understanding, and maybe there were some things that they could agree to either disagree on or could agree on. So, you know, it really kind of distresses me a little bit to hear that people are thinking that the board, you know, doesn't listen to what people say. The questions that I ask, I know the questions all my peers here on the board ask, you know, are very succinct to try to get to the issue of what it is. And, you know, and just another comment. You know, as a business owner, and I think the young lady in the purple said it right, you know, she had the opportunity to develop her grandmother, grandparents' property. That was her right, but she decided not to do it. And property rights are a very important right to have.
Yes, they are.
Very important. And it's our job to make sure that whatever is done is consistent with our zoning, is consistent with California Quali's Act, and we go through all these different steps. You know, so at the end of the day, as a business owner myself, if someone were to tell me, oh, well, you can't build a law office, you know, that is X because, you know, it doesn't fit with the community design, that kind of puts me in kind of an awkward situation when I have an expectation that if I go through the process, if I take comments, if I try to design it within the regulations, and then I spend an exceedingly amount of money on these things, at the end of the day, that it's subject to this kind of change, you know, that on itself is a difference in the game, I think. Just comment.
Right?
I would agree. Everyone that's here is doing their darndest to exhaust their administrative rights. They don't really have any other option but to do what they're doing. And they're hoping at some point their voice is heard and all the vetting goes on. My, reason for my comment about the initial planning department's opinion that, wow, you know, take that zoning and we'll allow you to move it wherever, you know, well, it kind of prejudices then that even the answers you'll get is part of your environmental impact assessment, is part of your negative deck. And as many of the people are commenting, well, we've addressed these issues, but all we get back is, that's not significant. And there are numerous ones. I mean, whether it's the traffic westbound or the negative effect of golf play, you know, a lot of these people who are not very wealthy in this community need an inexpensive golf course to play. That golf course is suffering big time, will suffer substantially more after this realignment because of golf course, the eighth fairway, seventh green, it's going to disappear, it's going to dramatically change driving range, things like that. The restaurant, that restaurant, everyone just assumes is going to do better because of this? That really hasn't been addressed in anything that I have read. And being the restaurant owner and knowing what it's like to have been one, I'd be very concerned about the RV park, especially when there's another design that could be done so simply, but no one's talked about that.
Supervisor Montgomery has a question.
I actually had a question for Paul as concerned to the issue that Mr. Dawson raised about this new model. Is there something in the conditions of approval that would prohibit that, or could we write something into the conditions of approval that would prohibit that model?
The, pardon me.
The model of, if I understood it correctly, and please jump in if I got that wrong, sort of RV manufacturers coming in renting or leasing the pads, managing the park and putting them there essentially permanently so people could then lease from them.
Yeah, we could probably fabricate a condition, but in looking at the one condition that limits the stay to 160 days right now, they would have to remove that trailer every 160 days, so.
So with the existing conditions from the Planning Commission, that model could not work?
That would not work because they would have to, you know, remove the trailer for, you know, that timeframe.
My understanding of that condition right there was you could remove the trailer and move it next door. Doesn't say you have to move it from the park. Where does it say that? Just move it for a week. So play musical, you know, trailers. You can have 51 trailers out there being rented by a RV park manufacturer to all these different, you could have a host of families out there, full-time, literally.
Actually, the condition says the vehicle shall vacate the park. So it actually does have to leave the land. Thank you.
But who enforces that? Is it the county that has to, are they just complaint driven then?
It's the same way we enforce all conditions of approval of all projects.
Yeah, I understand. I do. But again, reducing the size of this would not impact the golf course whatsoever. You could put the RV park up, like I said, on that southern side of that half circle, that south half circle. That's where it would go. I remember back, Supervisor Uller, when Jack Parnell, who I bought this from, we discussed length of zoning and what happened out there. And he said, well, I'm so thankful they gave me the commercial zoning back where they did. But then, he said, in turn, I had to offer the, everything in front, open space in perpetuity. That's what the, and you can read that, it's in one of the CPUs, it's in the, it's in one of the files that was submitted by one of the people, it mentions that as far as what the purpose of that zoning was all about for open space. And it was simply because you were to, I know it seems like everything's higher, but you'd go south of the existing restaurant, most of that land would not be, would be developed commercially because of the amount of earthwork required to construct it there.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. We have to move forward with the next speaker. Yeah, just read that up here, yeah. Who's next? Who wants to speak next?
Good morning. I'm Bryce Roberts. I'm a neighbor and property owner who is appalled and afraid of this proposed project, yet another trailer park. Don McKenny mentioned something that's quite accurate. Suddenly, we're going to be outnumbered by transients or what have you. And Randy brought up the point that, well, perhaps a neighborhood would be happy with maybe a smaller scale project like perhaps 25. But I don't feel we would. In a way, I'm kind of on Steve Kale's side, but again, I realize, you know, the gentleman owns the property, he's allowed to develop it. But however, the impact of this project will be severe on his neighborhood. Like Steve pointed out, the traffic, those motorhomes coming off will not be good. There's already, the highway patrol has been spending more time there. I see more sheriff's deputies there because people are flying down Musso Road, perhaps to get to Dingus McGee's. And every day, you'll see small children, pets, senior citizens, and occasionally handicap people walking along Musso Road to get some fresh air. So, it'll be a dangerous situation. I guess I should just try and make it short, but again, I don't feel it's the right thing to do. What do you guys think?
We'll let you know.
Show of hands. Thanks very much.
Board, my name's Garen Kendall, and I've been living, my family's been out there since 1958. I've seen that area develop where 50, 45 years ago, it was a big pear orchard. That's all that was out there before Interstate 80 did their renovations and did all the widening in the bridge. Now, we have the golf course. I was in there, I was one of the people that installed the irrigation system, the company that I worked for. And it was nice to see that at least it was a golf course, that at least it was a green area. The other restaurant was up there on the hill, but that was okay. Now, this gentleman wants to come in and put a whole bunch of other, you know, transient homes, basically. You don't know what kind of people they're going to be. Back when I had moved back down to, from Colfax to where I live now off of Chubb Road, that there was, I went and I did a Google search for the, what do you call it, the sex offenders website, because I have, at that time, I had small children. Just down there at that old trailer park, there was two registered sex offenders living there. And that was when the place has been a slum. And it's still a slum, that trailer park there at the end of Musso Road. Who's to say 40 years ago, 50, 60 years ago when that park was put in, had the same vision that this gentleman had? It's going to be a great place and everything, and yet now, look at it. It's a blight. There's a lot of drugs going on there, as has been mentioned, sheriffs have been coming in and out of there a lot of times. We actually, we have a deputy that used to live down the street. She was, we would talk about that, how there was a lot of calls out there. To have 51 units is a little bit crazy. 25, that's, you know, but the location of where they have the commercial, has anybody mentioned that in that location is also a canal? So that would kind of limit the kind of, what kind of structure is going to be put up there? But, I mean, here, all of us here as a neighborhood, we've been coming together, would you want to have a trailer park in your neighborhood? Because basically, that's what it is. And we have one person wanting to do what he wants, and he has the right to do it. It is his property. But as a neighborhood, we're coming together and asking you as people who live in neighborhoods too, would you want to have a trailer park in your neighborhood? Would you want to have the transient people, the headaches, or even if they're good people? And that's what you need to ask yourself. The Planning Commission, they came up with their stuff, they're on their own personal agenda. They don't live there. They aren't going to have to deal with the cars coming in and out, the traffic, the traffic which is horrendous throughout there at that intersection, which, and even coming from Dingus McGee's, there's no more stop sign there now. I, there's been at least three times in the last couple of months where I've almost been hit by somebody blasting down the hill, not even looking, and pulling right out in front of me. Just think what that trailer park's going to be. And we have to live there. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but in terms of your question of, you know, is this something that we would, would we want in our neighborhoods? I can tell you that yes, I'm actually working with a group of folks on Donner Summit to bring not this exact model, but a very similar model to Soda Springs.
Do you live in a subdivision?
I do, yeah.
And how big are the lots?
They're city-sized lots.
We live in five, three, and four acre parcels.
Your question was, would we bring this to our community? My answer to you is yes. And we're not just working on bringing an RV park to our community, but we're also working on bringing camping to our community. And so, I understand the concerns because we've discussed all these concerns.
That's a community, not a neighborhood.
My community is my neighborhood.
But you're used to living on smaller pieces.
Thank you. But my answer to your question is yes.
No, well, no, yeah, well, that is your opinion.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name's Darian Hamilton, and I'm a Bowman resident, been a Bowman resident for 42 years. The Auburn Bowman Community Plan has 22 general community goals, and I feel that this development as proposed doesn't fit the community plan. First off, number one, encourages new development in the Auburn area to contribute to the creation of mixed-use, compact, readily identifiable foothill town. And I don't believe that the 51-space, long-term RV park falls under that description. I think 1800-style, 1800's style architecture and oak trees. Number four here, provide for residential development which creates functional, attractive, cohesive neighborhoods which are closely tied to adjoining neighborhoods. There's very little attractive, I find attractive, or cohesive or neighborly about a sprawling RP, RV park. Provide a sufficient mix of neighborhood, regional, and highway commercial facilities to serve the residents of the Auburn Bowman region as well as those visiting area. Such a facility would serve probably, you know, visitors, but not necessarily our neighborhood. Maintain the Bowman commercial area as a highway service-oriented retail commercial area while attempting to minimize impacts on surrounding land uses and expand the range of commercial uses to better serve residents of the local area. And again, I believe as proposed, this RV park would serve its immediate clients and not the neighborhoods. Protect the IAD corridor, including appropriate areas along Lincoln Way and Bowman Road and the Bowman area to preserve existing scenic vistas of the American River Canyon and Sierra Nevada Mountain Range. You can't necessarily see the American River Canyon from this spot, but personally, I'd rather look at an open space or a green golf course than a 51-space RV park. Protect those local view sheds and scenic corridors along Highway 49, Bell Road, and so on and so forth. And again, I don't think that it fits. Preserve and protect from urban encroachment in rural and agriculture areas. Three parcels are open space and there's one residential agricultural parcel, and I don't feel that they'll be protected. Finally, protecting the lives and property of the citizens of the Auburn area from unacceptable risk resulting from fire and flood hazards. Well, I've never heard of an RV park flood, or RV park causing a flood, but I am very concerned about fire. We all remember the 2009, '49 fire, which two businesses, 62 homes and 343 acres were burned and about 40 million in damages. RVs have, in 2001, the United States Fire Administration reported an average of 3,550 RV fires each year in the US. These fires caused death, injuries, and approximately $30 million in damages per year. And so my greatest concern is the possibility of fire, fire starting in RV park and then jumping the tracks and going into our neighborhood, and of course, possibly blocking Highway 80. So just in conclusion, I just feel that this development, if it could be made in a smaller size or more cohesive to the Auburn Bowman Community Plan. Thank you.
Retired Supervisor Harriet White, welcome.
Thank you Chairman Holmes for introducing me. And good morning, Board. It's nice to be here. Happy New Year to you and to staff. I'm here in support of this project. How do I put this? I understand the fear and the angst of the residents in the area. But if you look at the projects... the projects that have been built in the North Auburn area over the last, how about twenty years? None of the concerns have occurred. I know because I live out there. So I hope you approve this project. I think it will be very, very good for business in the area. It's, I, we used to RV, we used to live part-time in the Phoenix area, and I know how nice it is to be able to travel to different places, to be able to golf in different places, and we certainly have a lot of wonderful golf courses in our area. And I've got to say that Dingus McGee's is a very good restaurant. Anyway, thank you very much for your time, and I'm sure you have no question.
Supervisor, did you have a?
No, I just have a button.
Oh, there it's off now, okay.
Oh, that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will close the period for public comment and bring this issue back to the board for a decision. Supervisor Montgomery, did you want to go first, or?
If there's anyone else who'd like to go first.
Supervisor, your word.
As this boils down to kind of three issues that have been identified, and at least in my mind, the issue of the hundred and eighty days, we've heard concerns about traffic and those kinds of things, and seems to me that the less movement in and out of RVs actually helps reduce the traffic, so it would speak to longer stay as opposed to one space turning over every two or three days. If a space turns over every two or three months, you've reduced the traffic impact. So I don't know how those two necessarily coexist, that somehow the hundred and eighty days and limiting the stays helps if the concern is the movement of traffic and these coaches. Also to that point, if I'm driving past this project and through the trees and the bushes, I happen to see a white coachman there, and then the next day I drive past and I happen to see a white Winnebago there, what's the difference between a white coachman being there one day and a white Winnebago being there? I just, I'm having a tough time. If the issue is not allowing for permanent residency and those things that accompany it by way of physical improvements and all the rest, certainly, I'm in concurrence there. But a hundred and eighty versus two seventy versus ninety, what is to presuppose that one is any better than any other? And why artificially limit the opportunity to do the business if, all things being equal, the business is being run the way that the county says it has to be run? Somebody being there for seventeen days can do an awful lot of damage, and a lot more than somebody who's there for a hundred and seventy days, should they so choose, and should the project not be properly managed? So I don't get that. I'm fine with the condition as it comes forward of seven days away, I guess. As I've tried to illustrate, this current proposal, I believe, is far, far superior and far less impactful environmentally, aesthetically, than what could be proposed there under the existing zoning and given the existing location, and the opportunities to maximize the visibility of a commercial project, be it a bar or anything else that could go there. I just, for the life of me, this is, I can't see how this is viewed as anything other than a superior alternative to what could come in under the existing zoning in its existing location. And finally, my experience, I don't have any real RV experience, other than knowing people who do long-term RVs. I grew up with a fellow who was a soccer coach for me, and when his kids grew to a certain age, he decided, his wife decided to sell their home. Their daughter lives in Colorado, their son lives out here in Roseville, and they split their time living in their RV. They have direct deposit of his pension check, and they drive a very nice coach, and they spend approximately half the year in Colorado where they park their RV, and they drive their little Jeep that they haul behind, and they spend their pension money in the local stores and at the local restaurants, and they go and they visit with their daughter. And then when the weather starts to turn a little cold in Colorado, they come back here, and they live half the year back here, actually, half the year down at the Placer County-run RV park at the fairgrounds, is where they frequently end up, where they'll spend half a year once again with their nice coach just parked there as they're out driving around, enjoying our stores and our shops, and spending time with their grandkids. That's my experience with long-term RV folks, and it's, it's not consistent with what I've heard here represented today in terms of the concerns of a trailer park or anything along those lines. They're simply two different entities, two different animals, and I think comparing them is unfair in terms of the impacts that this park might have on the, on the residents in the area.
Supervisor Wigan?
Yeah, actually, just editorial comment for CEDRA as well as County Execs Office. One way or the other, the board is going to get to enjoy soon some healthy conversation about community centers, which is an issue near and dear to my district. And the connection between these is that the time that I've been on the board, I've enjoyed, I think, pretty well, good staff ability to deal with complaints as it relates, particularly to conditional use permits. And I just want it sort of be assumed that when we have a recommendation from staff coming forward as it relates to issues like this, where I think a huge amount of the concern by the community is appropriately directed towards what could happen to these kinds of projects under the worst-case conditions, but with the county's ability and willingness to enforce the conditions of approval, I just want to make sure we have adequate staffing to make sure we do that promptly and effectively and efficiently. So David and CEDRA, you guys are seeing that it might be getting lean out there with some of these new kinds of endeavors we're involved in. I want to hear that so we can budget appropriately, so I still have that same level of confidence.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. I, Supervisor Yular knows how much I hate to agree with him, and he hates to agree with me. But in this case, I think a lot of the issues and the concerns that he has raised have validity. When I first looked at this, one of the very first things I did, and the folks, the appellants know this because I met with them, was looked at the uses that would be allowed under the existing zoning if nothing were to change, if we didn't swap the open space for commercial designations, if we didn't change the commercial zoning. You could put a halfway house on this. You could put a seven-eleven. You could put a liquor store. You could put a lot of uses which, at least from my perspective, would be much more negatively impactful of the community than a fifty-one space RV park. Now, I do share the appellant's concern about the length of stay, and as part of my homework on this, I did go drive around the various parks in Placer County to see what they looked like. You know, were people living there permanently? Was it truly transient, which is, you know, our staff report that went to the Planning Commission says the intent of the recreational vehicle park is to allow for short-term accommodations for park guests. I went to one park that clearly has morphed into a mobile home park, and it's a disgrace. I went to another park that talked to a couple of people there who said, yeah, they live there full-time, permanently. It's beautiful. I wouldn't mind living there. There aren't outbuildings. It's very well-maintained. People obviously have pride of home. But I think, I think certainly a way to address those concerns about it morphing into a mobile home park rather than an RV park would be to put some limitations in the conditions of approval. What I would suggest, we've heard a couple of things, so currently the staff recommendation is a hundred and eighty days plus seven-day removal. I heard one of the folks speak today to say that they would be willing for, you know, sixty days. My suggestion is that we basically sort of split the difference between those, allow a stay of a hundred and twenty days, which is four months, it's a pretty long-term stay, but it's not permanent, and require a minimum of fourteen days away, meaning you have to take your vehicle and move it off the pad or the site that it's on. So my suggestion would be that we change those requirements to a hundred and twenty days onsite, fourteen days off-site. I have a couple of other concerns that I would like to add to the conditions of approval. Right now, some of the concerns as it relates to visual and aesthetics, I would like to require a full screening of the property, as we discussed, along Musso Road and along the northern end of the proposed area. And I'd like to see a requirement that the landscape is maintained and replaced if it dies for a period of ten years. I think it's true that it takes a decade for things to grow. I don't think, you know, again, the incentive is to beautify the park as well as to screen it from the other areas. One of the things that's in there, one of the questions that came up in one of the meetings I had with people was lights and stray lighting. Looking closely at the lighting requirements, we have our own set of sort of dark skies rules here at Placer County, but the only thing that seemed to be specific to the international dark skies requirement was streetlights, and I would ask that we change the condition. So it says all exterior lighting be dark skies compliant. I've done that at my own house. It's not expensive. They're really good-looking lights. They're perfectly safe. There's no issues, you know, from the public safety question. Another issue that came up, and I would like to add this as a condition, is signage, making sure that people don't take a right turn going out of there and end up in the neighborhood and up at the cul-de-sac. I spoke with Mike Reese about it, and he indicated that he would be willing to put signage both on and off-site at the exit to make sure people didn't go right with their RVs, but were directed left back to the freeway. Last, and it seems almost insignificant, but it's not, is Auburn and this larger area west end of the fifth district has been having fairly significant bear problems in the past couple of years with trash. And so a condition of approval I would like to see in there is that all trash containers have to be bear-proof, and that they need to make sure that garbage is secured so that we don't have issues with attracting animals to the area, and then unsightly issues with garbage. So with those, with those changes to the conditions of approval, I would deny the third-party appeal, adopt the mitigated negative deck, uphold the Planning Commission's decision with those changes, and adopt the resolution and the ordinance.
Second? Supervisor Grant, do you have?
Yeah, I can't support that. You know, I'm sorry, Jen. I mean, look, the bottom line here is, is that all of these kinds of suggestions should have been done before we brought this thing here today. And what I don't want is to set a precedent that, you know, we're up to negotiation on the day that we have to make a board decision. You know, that, that, those, some of those changes, you know, I can't agree with. I think the project proponent has already agreed that they would do that with regards to the screening piece. But, you know, the whole idea of putting certain restrictions on this one particular park, when there are other restrictions in, or when there are virtually no stay restrictions throughout the rest of Placer, you know, I've got a real issue with it.
And with all due respect, I understand that, but at our last board meeting, we were asked to do what I'm essentially asking us to do today, which is take a new approach to an old situation. I'm referring to the discussion relating to regional university. In the past, we as a board have not looked at doing those sorts of reimbursements for the things we're being asked to do now. We make policy changes, both as sweeping policy decisions, but also by creating new conditions of approval that in the past we may not have asked for and may not have required, but due to changing circumstances, makes sense as we move forward with new projects. And I think that's really the difference. I don't disagree with you that these should probably all have been discussed long in the past, and that these should have come to us as part of a package. The problem is they didn't, and rather than move a project forward that we can make better today, I would propose that we make the project better, and that we take the actions today moving forward as similar projects come to us in the future. And that includes the existing mobile, or not mobile home, RV parks in the county as they change hands. That's an opportunity to bring them to these same levels, and to ask them to meet these same sort of community concerns and goals.
And I understand that. Before we go down that road, I would like to hear from the project proponent to see what he thinks about these additional, you know, requirements.
Before we do that, I'd like to, Supervisor Yular, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just on the motion, while I think that there were some suggestions from a design review standpoint that are very prudent, the bear one is one I didn't even think about that. I think it's a prudent suggestion. Certainly the kinds of things that we can take up under, under design review as a specific project comes in, not necessarily have to, you know, condition a project specifically with it, but I believe that the lighting, the downlighting is fairly typical of our design review in rural environments, those kinds of things. You know, my biggest concern comes back to the issue of limiting the length of stay again. It's my understanding that as originally proposed, there was no proposal for a length of stay, that it was, it was as a compromise, that we got to the hundred and eighty days with one week away, and now we're asking to further compromise beyond that original compromise that, that the applicant was, was looking for. And I just, for the life of me, you know, how, how do you arbitrarily determine that something's okay on the hundred and nineteenth day and all of a sudden it's bad on the hundred and twentieth day? It just, there's, there's no evidence to suggest that a hundred and twenty-day length of stay is somehow better than a hundred and eighty-day length of stay. There's no objective evidence to suggest it, but there is objective evidence that says that you will limit the kinds of residents, as I described, my, my coach and what they like to do was split the year. So you can definitively say you're going to limit the market of good folks that would otherwise utilize this. You cannot definitively say that limiting that length of stay is going to in any way, shape, or form increase the accountability of people there in any way, shape, or form. I just, I don't see it. So while I appreciate some of the design review suggestions, I simply can't support a motion that further restricts that length of stay.
And with, with all due respect, we, we have many things that are related to specific time periods within the county. Transient occupancy tax, for example, just comes to mind immediately. You know, if it's thirty days or fewer, you get charged transient occupancy tax. You know, we chose, or the state chose, and we chose to implement a arbitrary timeframe. And so, you know, my suggestion relates to creating a business environment where Mr. Reese and the park can be successful, but also addresses some of those longer-term concerns of the community. So my motion remains as I made it.
Well, let me just make some comments. First of all, I want everybody to know that I spent the majority of my life living with mobile home parks in my neighborhood. As a matter of fact, there were several, but one directly across the street. And I know that ninety-nine percent of those people are good, good people. As far as a hundred and eighty days, I have no problem with that. There's a couple of reasons. We talked about Caltrans construction workers coming in to do a project. You know, those mobile home parks out in North Auburn, many of them were built to accommodate the Middleport project for construction workers to come in. Some of them did their work and left, some of them decided to retire here. For a Caltrans worker, anybody working on a major project, particularly on Interstate eighty, doesn't mean they're going to spend six months there. It means that they're going to have a place to stay during their workday, and on the weekends or wherever they're going, wherever they live, they're going to go home and be with their families. Another thing that concerns me is, I've lived in North Auburn all my life. There's a lot of retirement communities, there's a lot of assisted-living communities. And many of those people, that's their residence. And as they come towards end-of-life decisions, they need, their family members need a place to come. They don't have accommodations in the assisted-living facilities. This is a perfect place for them to bring their RVs and This is a perfect place for them to bring their RVs and spend the time they need with those family members that are at the end of their life. And so that's why I have no problem with 180 days. And so I can't support Supervisor Montgomery's motion. I just want to let you know where I'm at.
I have another comment. You know, Jen, I do appreciate your view of the world. And, and maybe moving forward, maybe that's what we do is we take a look at how, you know, the bundle of sticks, so to speak, and the expectations of a project proponent moving forward and understanding that it's quite possible at the end of the day at this board meeting, when it comes to the Board of Supervisors, that there may be some aesthetic changes to that particular project. But to kind of unload it like right now at the 11th hour, and I'm not saying, you know, I think they're great ideas.
And I did actually discuss the length of stay change with Mr. Reese.
Right, right.
Not sandbagged by my proposal.
Yeah, no, no. It's just a little too much to kind of grasp. But again, I haven't heard from him, and I'd like to hear what he thinks about the process. But I would not be opposed in the future to discussing or having a greater policy discussion of, you know, how we kind of approach these kinds of aesthetic changes. And I know we did some last-minute issues with regards to the 150. I don't think that there were, you know, I know that the two of us at least were okay with the plan the way it was. And, you know, at the end result, I think it just ended up being more costly at that particular point to the project proponent to kind of jiggle the, the kind of puzzle at the end. But I would like to hear from the project proponent here.
Can I come forward, please?
And just to be clear before, come on forward, Mike, not a problem. Just to be clear, you know, before Mike speaks, I'm very supportive of this project. I'm very supportive of the 51 units. I'm very supportive of the lane use changes. I'm uncomfortable with the length of stay, and I think frankly, it's an opportunity for us as a board to start to change that future that you're talking about and start to change it today rather than kicking the can down the road and deferring it to a later date.
Sure. No, no, I appreciate that, and I get that.
And Mike and I will remain friends whatever my vote is.
Thank you, Supervisor Montgomery. And she is correct. She did tell me this, that she was going to go to the 120 days. And she also mentioned too, you only need three votes, so, so she was, she was very upfront about that. I, with respect to the 120 days specifically, when I first brought this project forward, I had proposed no length of stay because that's what, that's basically what my competition is. There's no length of stay requirements. Senior staff in the negotiation suggested that if I wanted to get a planning, I should say staff approval, that I would need to go with 180 days. So I went with 180 days and seven days. So your point is well taken, Supervisor Durant, that kind of the negotiation and back that, you know, it's been, we've kind of gone through the process, and last-minute things are always difficult and don't necessarily always know what the total impacts are, et cetera. So with respect to that, I would truly like to stay with the 180, seven day. As far as the full screening, that's agreed. That's a part of the improvement plans. I also have design review, totally okay with that. And again, that's mutually beneficial, both for me as the business owner and also for the neighborhood. It's good, it's just good for my clients. As far as the landscaping tenure, I'd prefer not to have a bond or a bunch of cash sitting out there for 10 years. I'm going to take care of the trees. It's, it's, again, it's mutually beneficial for both the use of the restaurant, the use of the RV resort. So I'm good with that. The lighting, I'm not real great on dark sky. I don't know if that has some problems with security. I'm okay with it as long as there's not, you know, I'm not causing myself any, shooting myself in the foot that I don't know about. Sorry, I don't know too much about that. This traffic, as far as the signal, Supervisor Montgomery is exactly right. I believe as Eve had mentioned that, you know, he's concerned about people coming through. Actually, I changed, amended my site plan to show a sign. If Public Works would like additional signage, I'm absolutely no problem with that signage. Bear-proof, actually that came up the last planning commission meeting. And I don't remember what planning commissioner it was, but one of them asked, well, have you had any bears in your garbage at Dingus McGee's? Because let me tell you, there's a lot of stuff in there that bears would really like. Hence, you know, thus far, no bears. But again, I guess if that could be a situation where if we do have a bear problem, I have no problem switching to a bear-proof container. But those things are kind of a pain to get open and such. But I think that was all of the items unless you'd like me to address anything else.
Just one more question.
Absolutely.
Has the project? Had you, thank you, Kirk. Had you been aware that there could be some changes beforehand at the end of the day at the final meeting here, would your comfort level be more, greater, or less?
Extremely less comfort level coming in here because I don't have a time to think through things and kind of, you know, really kind of think about the impact, and neither does staff either too, because a lot of times I'll see something, staff will see something, and we didn't go, oh man, we didn't think about that and the consequences. Then you've got to go back through the process again, and then there's interpretation. So, sorry, that was a long answer.
No, not at all. I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, Supervisor Montgomery's motion. All those in favor of Supervisor Montgomery's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed?
No.
No. It's like the noes have it. So.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of the project, denying the third-party appeal, adopting the mitigated negative deck, the associated findings, adopting the resolution, amending the Albert Bogman Committee Plan, reconfiguring the existing commercial in the open space along with the associated findings, adopting the ordinance, approving the rezone and all associated findings. Reaffirming the planning commission's approval of the conditional use permit as well, and that I believe is the last. Counsel, does that cover all the requirements? Within the motion, I'm not going to ask that we amend the conditions of approval to specifically delineate the things Supervisor Montgomery noted, but I would encourage staff that when going through design review, you look at the, the lighting so as to minimize the escape of light off-project. I think that the bear container is a prudent thing to be addressing upfront rather than retroactively because we know that once those bears find their way in, it's tough to get them off-site. And that's, so I just ask that staff through design review pay attention to those items that Supervisor Montgomery raised, and that's my motion.
And I'll go ahead and second that motion with the caveat that I do believe that the approach that Supervisor Montgomery has kind of thrown out here, it, you know, sounds like a reasoned approach moving forward. And if it's something that the board desires to work with staff to kind of come up with some kind of overarching principles. So we do have the ability to kind of make these kind of aesthetic changes, I guess, in a way that isn't, you know, that's open to, you know, the folks that are bringing forward a project and the people that are against the project, understand, you know, what exactly are the boundaries here? So.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, under discussion, just, I'll be voting no on the motion, but purely based on the length of stay. I think it's a great project. I think it will be a real benefit to the area, and I think that the concerns that the neighborhood has as relates to this specific project are going to be proven wrong over time. But I will be voting no on the motion just because I think the length of stay is too long.
Okay, any other?
Paul, you had something to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that in the motion that we're adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
All right. All righty, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right. Is this concluded?
Thank you. Jack did.
Jack, Jack Durant. Well, now we will move to our 10:30 timed item, Community Development Resource Agency Planning, Greyhawk 2 Rezone. Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you very much, Melanie. Good work.
Okay. Let's go, Roy. Roy, are you ready to proceed? Paul?
Just real quick, this next item is a request from our planning commission for approval of a rezone for the Greyhawk 2 subdivision. The Greyhawk 2 subdivision is a 21-unit planned residential development. The subdivision and tentative map was approved by the planning commission on November 8th. And to report on that is Roy Schaefer.
Thank you, Chairman. This shows the Greyhawk 2 subdivision location. And to the west is Sierra College Boulevard, and then north of it is Douglas Boulevard. And then this is the Greyhawk subdivision and Eureka Road to the south. It is a 10.3-acre infill site in Granite Bay. And a little bit closer, this is the Paramount Equity Office Building immediately to the west. And then to the north here is the Granite Bay Business Park with office buildings along this location. And then at the south is an undeveloped property owned by Mr. Patterson, which potentially will be developed in the near future. Now this shows the rezoning, and it already has a PD of two dwelling units per acre, and the change would be to the 2.8 and a little bit different other numbers as well. And this shows the site plan. The 21 lots are clustered around a private access road, looping access road with common areas at the back. And one of the great benefits of a planned development is, in this particular case, the whole southern part of the property, whole southern portion will not be developed. And you see in the middle here, this blue line is the strap ravine, and then there's a 100-foot floodplain on either side of strap ravine. So this is the benefit to the community of a planned development where you can cluster and have more density where your housing is proposed and preserve, in this case, the southern portion of the property. And this shows an area, or the gated entry proposed, and one pedestrian gate. And I guess that was it. I'll turn it back to the, so the board is here, and we recommend approval to adopt the mitigate negative declaration, including the mitigation monitoring program, and then to adopt the ordinance to approve the rezone. And that concludes the staff report from planning.
Any questions from board members? Staff, can anyone come forward and make any comments?
Supervisor Holmes, members of the board, George Phillips here today on behalf of Westwood Homes. I do have a handout for each of you that some of you have seen already, but some visuals I might refer to in our conversations.
Okay.
I'm going to try to keep my comments brief, given the length of your previous item. thing that I just want to emphasize is that we want to thank staff for working through, particularly planning side, of working through this project with us because it is a little unusual in that, in the design, because we don't have traditional lot block subdivision with fenced yards, et cetera. It's a little different approach to a residential neighborhood, and we're appreciative of them keeping an open mind as we work through those issues, and also to public works staff because I know that we're varying from driveway depth and that particular issue for them and road widths, et cetera. And so the flexibility that all staff has exhibited in working through this project has been most appreciated. The visuals that I handed out, again, are more to give you an idea, and again, most of you have seen these photographs, of the neighborhood in Sacramento County. We're not trying to pattern ourselves after Sacramento County, but this is a particular neighborhood that was designed, we think, extremely well, developed by Bob Powell in Gold River, that really is the development concept that we're attempting to strike with this, with this neighborhood proposal. Again, it is a different approach, not lot and block. All the areas that are not fenced within the project are common open space. It is targeted towards folks who are empty nesters, not necessarily raising young families. We think that it will be extremely successful because this is a great infill site for this type of use. But one thing I would point out besides, is already in your staff report, the fact that we received unanimous recommendation at the MAC, unanimous recommendation of approval at the planning commission, but also to highlight that we did, as part of our original proposal, have a pedestrian gate at the north end of the property that accessed a trail along a business park to our north. In the planning commission hearing, those owners attended that hearing, expressed their concern about that gate, did not want it. And we agreed with the commission at that point to remove that proposed pedestrian gate. We still, however, do have a pedestrian gate at the main gated entry where we'll have a vehicular gate and a pedestrian gate as well. And that's the one thing I wanted to highlight, that is, it is in your staff report, but wanted to point that out. And again, trying to keep things short, I'm here to answer any questions you might have after you receive any testimony.
Any, Supervisor Wiger?
Let me discuss this, but refresh my memory, the, what gate opportunities, what trail opportunities are there for residents as it relates to the gates that are still in existence as compared to the one that's not?
There is still, as he mentioned, there's still the one pedestrian gate at the gated entry. That planning commission added the condition of approval, it would be open from dawn to dusk. However, there was one gate that was never required by the county, and it was along the north property boundary, approximately in the middle of that north property boundary. And I believe the developer just wanted it as a, something that the property owners might be able to use and walk across and get to the retail. Unfortunately, right next to them at the north are offices, and the property owner there objected to having that, so they agreed to remove that. And the other, the other question, I think, regarding trails, there was no requirement to put any county trails in there. The trail would actually go on the north side of Eureka Road, and they're paying in Luth fees as far as the recreation funds for Granite Bay is concerned.
So my concern was more the gate that's been removed by the commission is in proximity to a trail or trail system?
No.
Oh, it's not?
If I could clarify, Roy, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. In the third to last and second to last photo in my handout, you'll see a decomposed granite walk, I should have said, as opposed to trail. It is, it is a decomposed granite walkway that extends the entire southern boundary of that business park. It is private property. And I think that was one of the issues when we originally designed or proposed putting the gate in, our thought was, well, let's, let's have a connection to that, that business park, provide access to that decomposed granite walkway. But again, the landowner pointed out that's private property, it's not a public trail, and they weren't supportive of having the public traversing their properties. So that's the reason we, it was removed.
And Chairman Holmes, if I might, just to further clarify, there's an ad hoc trail that kind of goes from the top half of the, trying to figure out what those directions are there. Looks like the east side?
Northeast.
The left side of the picture, and then connects into that decomposed granite trail along the north side. But that, that is not a public trail. It's on private property, and it's really just sort of a shortcut, I think, for some of the people who have businesses in both sets of business parks, if I'm correct remembering our conversation.
Exactly. The Paramount Equities that Roy mentioned, their building is right here, they also have a significant number of employees in the business park. And those And those employees go back and forth between buildings. What they've done is they, there's a worn trail that goes across the northwest corner of our property, and then goes across that decomposed walkway, which runs along this entire length. And at the planning commission, we suggested that they could, those employees could access, this is a detention basin behind one of the buildings, and if they wanted to have a conversation, Paramount Equities, with these folks about some kind of connection to that walkway and then to their other employees, that that's a better route than currently continuing the trespass condition on our northwest corner. I think that's fine. Thanks. Any other questions?
Any other questions from board members? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this issue? Ma'am, come forward. Morning.
My name is Gail Sanders, and I'm president of the association, the Granite Bay Business Park Association. I'm also an owner in the park. I was at the planning commission meeting, and I'm very familiar with this. And speaking to the last item that the gentleman was just here, I'm actually in talking with the Paramount Equity folks about providing some access to, the exact access you're talking about, through the catch basin. So we are talking with them. So as far as their employees go, he knows he's trespassing. He's aware of it. Anyway, but I'm here, I hope you received my short letter. Good. I appreciate that. I wanted to point out that we're not opposed to this subdivision at all. We favor it, and we think it's a good idea. I wish them all their luck in the world. What we didn't like was the gate. And I found that it was not referenced anywhere in any of the documents, the planning commission document, the, I just need it somewhere documented, so in four, or five, or eight years, and whenever it is, when someone, perhaps there's a new board, or a new whatever, that there's a place I can say, I can't say, oh, but I remember when they said that. And it is actually said within the documents. Would that be possible?
Mr. Thompson.
Just would like to point out, the planning commission approved the conditional use permit for the planned residential development and the tentative subdivision map, which had the conditions of approval. The only thing that's before your board today is the rezoning of the property. So there is no opportunity to place a condition, but as the applicant has indicated, they are not proposing a gate at this point, so.
I just would like verification, and that somehow or other, that will be put into the minutes, into whatever is written, that I was here, and that you understood it and agreed.
I think, if I just can speak for Paul here for a moment, I think what he's indicating is that what the planning commission approved does not have a gate. That's what's approved.
That's what I wanted to hear.
And that's what, moving forward, will be your historic document.
Okay. Can I get a copy of that?
And you're on TV.
Please, thank you very much. Okay, I'll give you my card. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for action from the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
First of all, I want to thank George and the applicant for an awful lot of hours in front of the MAC meeting with the community. The participation, or lack thereof, I should say, at this board meeting is reflective of the fact that, over the course of the last couple of years, as they have been developing this project, they have listened to what the community had to say, they've addressed the community's concerns, they are reflected in the map that's in front of us. And I will say, this map is far superior to other project alternatives that had been presented to me earlier on, not by this applicant, but when the property was actually held by a different owner. And so I think the community is pleased to see this kind of a project meeting a real and identified need in the Granite Bay community plan area for empty nester-type housing. As for the trail, I apologize, that was my suggestion. I thought it might be a good idea to have the trail connection through there. The project applicant included a trail connection to the north to accommodate what I thought would be prudent, and I was out of turn, because I hadn't consulted with the property owners to the north. In fact, the idea for a connection actually came to me as a result of the Paramount Equity. A good friend of mine is a senior executive at Paramount Equity, and I've walked that trail with him between those offices before. And so I'm certainly fine with the project moving forward without the trail, and I apologize for having created the confusion in the first place. And so, that all having been said, I would move that we adopt the mitigated neg deck, including the mitigation monitoring plan for this project, and adopt the ordinance as approving the rezone associated with this project.
All righty. Any more discussion? It's been moved and seconded to adopt the mitigated negative declaration regarding Greyhawk II project. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. We will now move to our 10:45 timed item. Economic Regional Prosperity Plan. I could use a little of that. I could use a little of that. Prosperity. Mr. Snyder, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Jim Holmes and honorable members of the board. The very brief item before you this morning is to adopt a resolution endorsing the Next Economy Regional Prosperity Plan, which includes strategies aimed at accelerating job creation and economic health across Placer, Eldorado, Sacramento, Sutter, Yolo, and Yuba counties. And I have with me today Jim Williams of the prestigious architectural firm, Williams and Patton. Jim is also part of the very distinguished leadership group of Next Economy, and he's going to make a couple of comments, but first, I wanted to also let the board know that the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber, SACTO, the Sacramento Area Commerce and Trade Organization, SARDA, the Sacramento Area Regional Technology Alliance, and a group close to Jim's heart, Valley Vision, is behind the prosperity plan. They are the organizers and those that have saw this thing through from the beginning. The initiative pinpoints competitive strengths and kind of maps out a set of interlocking strategies that can accelerate job and wealth creation and boost new investment across our entire region. A couple quick items. One, numerous individuals throughout Placer County kind of participated in this process. We had a good local team kind of behind the effort. It's probably most important to mention that it also aligns neatly with our Placer County Economic Development Board roadmap. So with that, Jim might want to make a comment or two, as he has waited so patiently this morning to...
And I do appreciate it, it disabused me of any idea of ever running again, so.
Come on, you know you loved it.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Jim Williams, Williams and Patton Architects, and also a resident of Loomis, and I've been in Jim's district and Kirk's district, but I guess I'm in yours now, so that's good.
Nice to have you.
It's my pleasure. The, this economic development strategy has been developed over about the last year and a half, and I guess, just a couple of points that I would add to what Dave presented is, number one, a very lot of research went into identifying the key drivers for the economy, and where the most opportunity there was for taking what we already have and growing that and magnifying it in a way that actually leads to jobs and wealth creation in the region. And I have to give Roger Nilo credit, because every time any idea would come up, he says, can you show me how that's going to help us create jobs? And so that's a very high priority. One added benefit, this entire process has been conducted under the format for a community economic development strategy, which is a federal designation, which can make any of the jurisdictions within the coverage of this plan eligible for particular grants from, what is it, the Commerce Department and others. So I'm not sure whether Placer County has a SEDS at this point in time, but this will cover everything within the strategy itself. So it's an added bonus. This is the point of the executive summary, the process is moving into an implementation plan, and there are very specific teams that are going to be created to really try and make something happen in each of these areas. And then finally, really quickly, at the Roseville Economic Development Committee meeting last Friday, there was a presentation by a representative from Hewlett Packard. Hewlett Packard is one of the groups, is in one of the focus groups that are a part of this plan. And it was an interesting presentation, because most of what we hear about HP and the media is somewhat, has been characterized as that they've lost their way. They have some very, very dynamic and growing divisions that are located in Roseville, and there are strategies that can be taken just to work with what's working for them, and how do we take those opportunities and expand it? Because any, all of you have been around long enough to see what a driver HP was to the economy when it came to town. So those are the kind of opportunities we're going to look, how can we, how can we further facilitate bringing in the synergies for those already well-established industries, economic drivers that we have? So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Seeing none.
And also, I'd just like to add an exclamation point. Jason Buckingham with Golden Sierra Job Training Agency was, had hoped to be with us today, and he could not. He was, his task force was called to Sacramento, and he wanted to assal on that his support is very high for this. In fact, the prosperity plan is informing the state workforce investment board plan, so that's a good connection for us as well. And with that, then concludes our presentation, and I would recommend adoption of the resolution.
Any further comments from board members?
With approval of adoption of the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone from the public wish to speak to this issue? Seeing none, thank you. Continue.
With approval of adoption of the resolution endorsing the Next Economy Regional Prosperity Plan.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Any abstentions? No? Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Williams, retired supervisor Williams. So now, we're going to move to our 11 o'clock timed item. Community Development Resource Agency Chinook Salmon in the Auburn Ravine Watershed. This is an update on status of Chinook salmon and Steelhead in the Auburn Ravine.
Hello, board. It's Edmund Sullivan here to give you the update on salmon returning to Auburn Ravine, which is quite a monumental, you know, event in Placer County.
Yeah, it's a historic event.
So this is a map of Auburn Ravine Watershed, and this is the watershed that will be the main focus of my presentation today. Historically, we don't know a lot about salmon and Steelhead in Auburn Ravine. You know, we have some anecdotal accounts from early residents of salmon that were in, you know, in the stream, but we really don't have a, you know, population count, or how robust it was. In Doty Ravine, which Supervisor Weigant grew up on, he recalls seeing salmon and Steelhead in his backyard in the 1960s. And those are kind of the accounts we have from local residents of the fisheries. So fast forward to the 1990s, and we start to have a dialogue and discussion about the future of water quality and salmon and fish in Auburn Ravine. So people started to come together and started to talk about the issues. In 2003, which was the time where the county was putting together an ecosystem restoration plan, and there was Auburn Ravine Coon Creek Watershed Group that was convened, actually, Jim attended some of those meetings early on. And out of both the watershed stakeholder group process and out of the plan itself, Fish Passage was identified as a priority in Auburn and Coon Creek. In 2005, Placer County took the initiative and started to get those stakeholders to cooperate and work together. We met with NID, we met with the city of Lincoln, we met with the NGOs to start to talk about, you know, how we can implement the plan and try to get fish and salmon back into the streams of West Placer. Also in 2005, the federal government designated Dry Creek, Auburn Ravine, and Coon Creek as critical habitat for Central Valley Steelhead. In 2006, Fish and Game conducted surveys in Dry Creek, Auburn Ravine, and Coon Creek, and the Steelhead Rainbow Trout Fisheries in Auburn Ravine was designated as one of the best in the foothills. It's quite an astounding sort of result of those surveys, was to identify this as a resource of local significance. In 2011, we finished the construction, we, you know, NID was, really stepped up to the plate, and the county really stepped up to the plate, and what happened was, we built the fish ladder. And as a result of that, you now have nearly 300 Chinook salmon that have gotten over that gauging station, fish ladder, and another 50 or so got over the Hemp Hill Dam, which to this date doesn't have a fish ladder on it. But they got over that during higher flows, you know, when we had, you know, we had a very wet fall, which was good for the run. And Fish and Game identified over 50 reds, and reds are where they spawn and lay their eggs, so.
Wow, that's great.
So we have two target species in our watersheds, and they're also both covered species of the Placer County Conservation Plan. The first one here is a picture of the Steelhead, second one is of the Chinook salmon. And then we have their life cycle, of which, so the salmon come and they spawn, they lay their eggs, of which they spend about half their life cycle in Placer County. So as they are, you know, as an egg, and then with the fry, and then the smolt cycle is spent in Placer County, and then they go out to the ocean and mature, and then they come back. So 4,000 eggs are generally laid in a red. Only two of those ever return to their natal stream. So there's quite an attrition process that happens. So both Chinook and Steelhead spawn in the Bear River, the American River, Dry Creek, Coon Creek, and Auburn Ravine, all in West Placer County. Steelhead can get up to 45 inches in length, and Chinook up to 58 inches. We have a winter-run Steelhead, Central Valley Steelhead run in Placer County, and we have a late fall-run Chinook population. This is a picture of where the project that I referred to earlier, where we built the ladder, the NID gauging station, that's where it is in the city of Lincoln. That's a picture of, taken from Google Earth, and that's during the construction. This is the, this is how it looked before, and you can see how impassable that would be for the fish. And these are some construction shots that you guys have seen already. This is the finished product, where the 300 or so salmon got over this November and December. And then, these are the fish that were taken. A photographer by the name of Phil Robinson... by the name of Phil Robinson had taken these pictures. And there is the evidence of the fish returning. There's another one. And then we're on to the next project that we, working with NID and the state and the feds on. This is the Hemp Hill Dam, and it's near Turkey Creek Golf Course, say that five times fast, and off of Virginia Town Road. And this is the facility with its flashboard dams in it. So it's a diversion dam for irrigation. There's about five or six customers, including the golf courses in Lincoln, that utilize the water coming off of that canal. That's a picture of the fish from the same photographer trying to get over the Hemp Hill Dam. There's observations from members of SARSIS and from Fish and Game of fish trying to get over the dam. You know, they counted 50 or so that did, which you could see the benefit of either putting in a side channel or a fish ladder or removal of the dam, how that could lead to, you know, you know, 200 fish getting beyond that if there's a way we can facilitate passage. And we have another picture of them trying to get over. Then this is a picture of salmon that were recently seen in Hidden Falls Park on Coon Creek. So that's the first time of photographic evidence of salmon in Coon Creek. We definitely have a lot of property owners that have told us they've seen salmon, and the Fish and Game did see salmon carcasses when they did their survey in '06. Next steps, our NID in this county is working collaboratively with them is exploring various fish passage improvement alternatives from the Hemp Hill Dam. There is a PCC credit that we can obtain by improving fish passage in our West Placer streams. One of, so we're working with the Hidden Valley Homeowners Association on Cottonwood Dam, and we're working with NID on Hemp Hill, and those are sort of our priority projects. And there's a farmer in West Placer that, it's a South Sutter diversion dam that we're working with South Sutter and this farmer to try to improve passage on that dam in Coon Creek. The iron is hot, so to speak. The state and local engagement has never been greater, and the goal of both the PCCP and Placer Legacy and the various stakeholders has always been to get migrating salmon uninterrupted passage above Hemp Hill into the prime spawning habitat. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you for this opportunity, and there is no action required by the board at this time.
All righty. Any comments from board members?
Just thanks Edmund for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I thought you apologized, Mr. Chair, give you adequate time to, I just, to me, it's a, it's interesting case study in local government and how we have the opportunity to be entrepreneurial and actually accomplish things. We did not have to do this project for compliance of regulation purposes, but since we had gotten into the business with our open space work and with an eye on the PCCP, we were in that business, and we were looking for opportunities to work collaboratively and not with a hammer with partners. And NID did a great job stepping up to the plate. We've done, Edmund talked about some of the local property owners with whom we are now working, but who in the beginning were scared to death of us and the kind of work that we were doing. So it takes a long time to get to that point where you have credibility. But in my view, I think State of California is reliant on, reliant on 12 hatcheries throughout the whole state for its offshore salmon population, which is a huge industry, has tremendous benefits. For very cost-effective, collaborative types of efforts, we can essentially replicate that with these facilities, these resources that are great spawning habitat, result in huge shot in the arm to the economy, great amenity to our residents, and a much stronger, stronger working relationship between our communities and other local governments. So thanks for the presentation, Edmund, and thanks for the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Superintendent Durant?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I see a member of, a STEAM member of SARSIS sitting in the back there. See if he wanted to come up and say a couple of words.
Edmund, thank you for a great presentation. At the Hemp Hill Dam now, SARSIS works in collaboration with several photographers, and we do have videos of salmon making it over the Hemp Hill Dam, making it about five miles above. And we have one incredible sequence of about 12, 20, 30 pound Chinook salmon surrounding a female, waiting for her to dig the red and lay the eggs very attentively. She starts to do that, and these 12 males start to become enlivened, shall we say? And up in the top of the film is a tiny male salmon called the precocious male salmon. At a perfect time, the female starts to release the eggs, and there's just a microsecond window for fertilization. And this tiny precocious salmon comes roaring down, goes under all the waiting males, releases this giant cloud of milt semen. It just covers the screen, it floats down, and fertilizes the eggs. And to have a film like that in the Auburn Ravine is just fabulous. I have a video here that Robert at some other point, I'd be delighted to show the board with all this on it, 18-minute video. So anyway, things are happening out of the Auburn Ravine. Your, your support has just been absolutely incredible, not, not just the Placer County Board of Supervisors, City of Lincoln, City of Auburn, and all the state agencies. And this is one thing that we found that everybody can agree on, that salmon should be back in the Auburn Ravine. So thank you for all your help, and look forward to talking with you again. Any questions?
Well, first of all, we appreciate your involvement in this, but for the record, we need your name.
You need what?
Your name. I mean, we all know who you are.
I'm Jack Sanchez.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
SARSIS, yeah.
And Mr. Chair, like a little bit of an aside, but since we've taken so long anyways. Jack was Ed Bonner's track coach at Delora High School, and now he's retired, of course. But, you know, Ed told me that you had some ties, Jack, but I didn't, I didn't believe that you ever owned any ties or sports coats or anything. But just wanted to make, for the record, I want to make knowledge of.
What is he lying about now?
[laughing]
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Jack, I just very quickly wanted to say thank you for all your work, and please pass it along to all the members of SARSIS, because really, without your vision, I think it would have been much more difficult to get where we are. And I really want to thank you, Edmund, for all your efforts on, on this. I know that water and hydrology is really dear to your heart, and not just your efforts on this, but your efforts relating to Squaw Creek and the Truckee and all of that. They're, they don't go unnoticed, and they're very appreciated by all of us.
You know, Placer Legacy and its offshoot, Hidden Falls Regional Park, may be the best thing that Placer County has ever created. And a lot of you were on the board when that was created. So just keep doing what you're doing. We really appreciate it.
And I would add, not only your vision, but your prodding as well.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? Anybody in the audience wish to address this issue? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Edmund. That was a very nice presentation. Good, good news. So now we'll move to our 11:15 timed item. Is everybody doing okay? We need any break or anything? Okay, we'll move forward. I'm good. Allison Carlos, County Executive, West Placer Land Development Policies.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board and Chairman Holmes. Allison Carlos with the Executive Office, and I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can, given the time. Today I'm presenting this item. This is a non-action item. It's informational. And with me also are a number of the land development departments, those departments that have land development responsibilities. This is a continuation from the November 20th meeting with your board, where you authorized a series of workshops to talk about West Placer. Today we were just going to briefly talk about some of the policies for that particular area of the county and how they've been applied to certain projects. For a quick overview, this is just the area we're talking about in general, and what we discussed last November was that in fact, projections say that this particular area of the county, inclusive of all the cities, an unincorporated area would, population would double in about 50 years. So this is a high-growth area for the county, with intensities planned to be more in the urban suburban side. The greatest percentage of the new growth would occur in the area we call the West Placer Planning Area. And to be specific, today we talk a little bit about Placer Vineyards, Regional University, and Riolo Vineyards. That comprises 20,000 dwelling units of approved, entitled project area, as well as 4 million square feet of, of non-residential and one university site. The planning for growth portion of this, for decades, the county has planned for growth in this area of the county with various land use policies, job housing balance considerations, and infrastructure and services. Also, what was recognized as significant commitment would be made to infrastructure and services over time, in the way of roads, sheriff services, fire services, sewer water, general government services. As this series of workshops, your board, with your board, a large part of what we are moving towards is some additional understanding on implementation as it pertains to infrastructure and services. And so today, part of the policy discussion does focus on that a little bit, but we are going to start out a little bit broader with respect to land use policies and some of the documentation that is typically put into place as specific project proposals move forward. Policy documents and complementary board actions have led development so far. And also, there has been the use of specific plans quite a bit to look at land use allocations, land development, specific uses, and finance methods. The 1994 General Plan is the base document with use of the 1990 Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan. And within that, clearly, there have been other documents that have been referenced back to the General Plan, and the staff report notes a couple of those things, the future study area in the West Placer area, as well as an early 1982 planning document that was considered by boards in the past. Specific policies were listed in the staff report, and all that we do is note the General Plan policies that really pertain to some of this discussion. Examples would be growth distinguished by land use, and where infrastructure is provided was important. That patterns of development would facilitate efficient and timely provision of urban services. That patterns of development would facilitate effective, efficient and timely provision of urban services, and there would be timely development of public facilities. I won't go into the 1982 policy document information as some of that was referenced in the staff report. In 2005, with respect to other board direction, we did return to your board as staff was interested, as the project proposals were coming forward and bridging broader policy with specific proposals. So the policies for projects are implemented through some of these common documents. It's important to clarify that these are, the construct of these is collective, meaning when any of these are changed, there has, is an evaluation of the materiality and all of the various plans or documents that could be affected. The staff report highlighted specific plans and development agreements. I think at the next board meeting, which is planned in early spring, we would intend to talk more about the financing plan. But the specific plans that we use were comprehensive planning tools for geographic areas. One of the things that was mentioned in November is that comprehensive and detailed planning for the area was not necessarily in place when the projects originally came forward. So specific plans have been used for that purpose. For the Placer Vineyards development, the 1990 Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan was the planning, was required that the specific plan be prepared. Same thing with regional, with Riolo Vineyard specific plan. And for Regional University was the General Plan and its placement, Regional University within the future study area, that designated it needed to provide a specific plan. The DAs were also approved for each of the three projects, which were the request and, and the consensus of the developers, project proponents in the county to effect respective interests. I just, we wanted to remind the board that another community plan in the area is the Sunset Industrial Area, and we won't go into all the detail, but again, with the pullback of the sphere of influences, it's been important to note that that is a slated area for the jobs housing balance piece. As I mentioned, comprehensive community planning had not been accomplished when these projects did move forward. And one of the things that did occur is, is that we were looking for the documentation stream that would support how these, the board would make decisions for approving these projects specifically for infrastructure and services. So at a planning level, the planning level analysis only, the interest was to build as much cohesion and correlation of the communities and for the delivery of infrastructure services with these individual specific plans. Project needs for facilities and services were defined, fiscal impact analyses were prepared, and the preliminary financing and services plans were also prepared. Dealing with the interest for sustainability and funding, at the time the board approved the projects, the financial burden imposed on projects was significant. Services and infrastructure were substantial, in part because of the low property tax share within the area and pockets of the area to pay for the services, but also with the, in part, the planning level of services and infrastructure assumed. Notwithstanding that, significant infrastructure is required for project delivery, and the workshop in February will put that into some additional context. But what we did discuss with your board was that services would be provided in a fiscally responsible manner and sustained over time. The allocation of cost for funding new services and facilities and infrastructure would be fair, consistent, and equitable. And there was a recognition that portions had the low property tax share. Implementating documents also that were very specific regarding the developer obligations to build better assurances for financial risk to the county was the development agreements. It addressed timing. All development agreements addressed timing and funding for infrastructure and services, as well as binding obligations that were related. As the project proponents are preparing for implementation, new proposals for delivering the projects are emerging. That's also included in your staff report, but what we have been in discussions with them about, although no formal applications have been presented, is shifting some of the public facility construction responsibility and administration to the county from the projects, to shift required improvements to later in the project life, to reduce or eliminate some specific land uses with respect to governmental facilities, deletion of financing policies that prioritize services, financing over infrastructure, and then the proposal for a second CFD. To date, like I said, none of these proposals have formally come into the county, and this is under discussion. One of the things I would point out is that Riolo Vineyards owners have expressed preferences to be considered a standard subdivision, with a fee structure similar to that required for the low-density residential projects in the area. So with that, I'm going to conclude my comments, because there may be other comments from those in the audience. Staff would intend to return to your board in February with substantial more detail on the services and facilities, and would be happy to take any questions or comments that you have regarding policy at this time.
All righty. Any board comments here? Seeing none. Thank you for a very detailed report. We'll open it up to the public for anyone that wants to address this issue with the board at this time. Seeing none. This is just an information item. Thank you very much. We'll move forward. Thank you for being here. Wow. All righty. What I'd like to do next, our timed item for committees and commissions, I'd like to move to our, if the board indulges me, finish up the department items with Public Works. It's Peter Kratz Sterius. That way you gentlemen can go have lunch, or whatever you want to do. Take a nap.
All righty then. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Peter Kratz again with the Department of Public Works for item 11B. This item relates to adopting a resolution approving a cooperative agreement between the North Tahoe Public Utility District and Department of Public Works to perform utility relocation at NTPUD's expense to facilitate construction of the Kings Beach Commercial Corps Improvement Commercial Core Improvement Project. There will be no net county cost. By way of background, the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project has been, excuse me, in the design stage for the last two years, which includes coordination with various utility agencies such as the NTPUD to address potential utility conflicts. Some of the proposed project improvements conflict with NTPUD facilities that will require relocation. The county and the NTPUD find it advantageous for the county to perform the relocations as part of the overall project. And as articulated in the attached agreement, the NTPUD will fully fund the relocations. The project has met all applicable environmental review requirements, and fiscally, the estimate for the NTPUD relocations is $751,000, in which the county will seek reimbursement from the NTPUD after performing the work through the terms of the attached cooperative agreement. So in closing, the department requests board approval of the two actions as spelled out in the board memo, including adopting the resolution. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have on this item.
Any questions from board members? Anybody in the audience wish to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring them back to board for action.
Move approval.
Moved and seconded to approve item 11B. All those in favors, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? We'll move to item 11C.
Yes, Chairman. Peter Kratz again. For the record, this item relates to adopting a resolution agreeing to hear resolutions of necessity in conjunction with the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. There will be no net county cost. By way of background, and similar to our last department item, the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project has been in the design stage for the last two years, which includes efforts to secure right-of-way acquisition of various properties needed to construct project improvements. Specifically, right-of-way acquisition is needed from 12 properties to accommodate the proposed roadway roundabouts and drainage improvements, and from six properties identified for public parking lots. All needed properties are in escrow or have closed escrow, except for one property on the northwest corner of Highway 28 and Coon Street and one parking lot site. Although all indications indicate the property owners will agree to grant a right of entry to allow project construction prior to finalizing acquisition settlements, the project schedule may require consideration of acquisition by eminent domain. In order to exercise eminent domain authority on a project on a state highway, Caltrans requires the local agency to furnish a resolution approved by four-fifths vote by your board agreeing to hear all future resolutions of necessity that may be required for the project. So just to be clear, today's requested action is not a resolution of necessity related to any specific property acquisition, but an administrative action needed as a safeguard to keep our project on schedule in the event a right-of-entry and/or acquisition settlement cannot be reached from one or more properties in a timely manner. Environmentally, the project has met all applicable requirements. As you know, fiscally, acquisition costs are funded by the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act. And in closing, I ask then that your board adopt the resolution agreeing to hear resolutions of necessity in conjunction with the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project and stand before you to address any questions you might have. Thanks.
Any questions? Supervisor Duran.
Real quick, the resolution of necessity, that's a requirement of Caltrans.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions from board members? Anyone in the audience wish to address this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to board for action.
Move approval at the end.
It's moved and seconded to approve item, the public works item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Now we'll move to our 11:30 timed item. The Board of Supervisors, 2013 Boards and Commissions Discussion and Assignments. Oh, hi.
Oh, hi. Ollie Heinz in the County Executive Office. I'm going to just kick this off for your discussion. As you know, every year, your board considers committee and commission appointments and assignments. This year, there are about 54 of those that you will be reviewing. It includes land use transportation, various associations, and some oversight, program oversight committees. Given the time constraints of the board, last year, the board did want to consider sending staff to some of these committees and commissions, and there may be opportunities for that this year as well. Just wanted to make sure that you are aware that that was part of the thinking in the past. And with that, I will consider any questions or take direction. We would be coming back on January 22nd to finalize this list. So this is truly just an opportunity to have the discussion and provide direction.
I do have a comment, and I know that Supervisor Holmes, she wanted me to take over the primary on SECOG. I don't have a problem doing that at all, but what I would like to do is I would like to have some kind of a set endgame of what we would like to happen. You know, because quite often, I get there and there's really no, you know, and my briefings are only when something pertains to...
Specific.
Yeah. So if we have a roadmap, and if there's something that you want me to accomplish, I'd be more than happy to carry the ball, but I just need to know what it is.
Right.
Getting funds for this, or getting funds for that, let's, you know...
Well, and we can do that and evaluate the agenda, or indeed, put forth issues for the agenda that helps us accomplish our own goals and interests.
Yeah, that's, you know, a roadmap would be great. I'd be good with the direction. Don't want me going out on...
Supervisor Montgomery.
I just wanted to indicate that as we discussed the highs here, our CND has been dissolved. There will be still a meeting of the executive board of that group, but Placer County is not on the executive board, so we may need to remove that from our side of committees and commissions. Otherwise, I'm perfectly happy to remain in the capacity in which I've served.
Yes, and we have noted that.
Supervisor Gurland.
Yeah. To Supervisor Duran's comment, I think that's very beneficial that we proceed as he described. And I would even encourage perhaps David that it might be worth you reaching out to some of our city manager friends and seeing how the South Placer area might be able to present a more unified front on some of these things and develop an agenda. That's important to all of us, and make sure that, especially as we're dealing with the regional housing allocation and related issues and those kinds of things, make sure that our voice is heard. And I think that with Roosevelt, Lincoln, Rockland, and us all kind of singing from the same sheet, it might be far more effective. So I think that'd be a good thing for you to maybe go meet some of those city managers and have that conversation.
Yeah, yeah. And just to kind of let you know, I have met with Ray Carriage from City Roosevelt. We've kind of talked about exactly that, about, you know, trying to make, not, you know, just trying to make our voices and our concerns and our issues so we're kind of on the same page. And that's, you know, I'll do what I can to make that happen.
Yeah. And if I might add to that, I have spoken with the city managers on that very issue, and they all did express interest to, you know, a little bit in varying degrees, but certainly when there are specific issues that arise, all of them wanted to participate and be part of a, really, a coalition from Placer County.
And Supervisor Duran, there were three commissions that are attached to SECOG, Transportation, Land Use, and Natural Resources, and then the other one's Public Outreach, I think. So I, since I didn't know where you were at, I went ahead and recommended Transportation, and then, secondly, Natural Resources. But what I would, if you would like, I could take, since I'm on the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, I could take the transportation component of that if that would help you.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you could do the...
If you could.
Sure.
That would be great.
All right. Yeah. And then I would work with Celia McAdam to facilitate this. So any other discussion? Should we just go down this list? And is that...
That's what you...
Well, there's one that I wanted to bring forward, and this is the Placer Nevada Wastewater Authority. Since Newcastle is now absorbed into, or the annexed into, the South Placer Municipal Utility District, I don't know what the value of having that advisory board or whatever it is. We're working with Auburn, we're working with Lincoln. I don't know whether we should move forward with that, but it'd be up to you, Supervisor Wigan. I know you've been on that. But since Newcastle is pretty much on the verge of dissolution, it just takes more staff time. We've got county dollars involved in that.
Now the group is collaboratively funding the executive director. And the last report we got was that he's got funding for a month or two, I think. And that might take its own course anyway, unless, you know, there's some reason to think that we should continue. But, so I guess my recommendation would be to leave it on for the time being, and it might end up being gone in a month or two or three anyway, but there might be some loose ends that we can wrap up, particularly as it relates to conversations with the City of Auburn that might be helpful with.
Okay. Fair enough. Community Services Commission is going to be taken over by a nonprofit Project Go. We will still have to have some city and county representatives, but we can assign staff to go to that. Been taking out of the hands of Health and Human Services, which has been a challenge for them over the years. So I'll ask some staff members if they would rather. I've been assigned to that, and I don't mind doing it again, but if there's something that a staff member could devote some time to that, I would look forward to that. Any other changes? All right.
Anything else? Then we will come back on the 22nd, according to the conversation that we've had today.
Okay.
Thank you so very much.
All right. Thank you. And now I think that concludes our business, except for a closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the items that are on the agenda, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, George Fetter versus Tonya Placer and Placer County Sheriff. And the board will also have a conference with its labor negotiators regarding the Deputy Sheriff's Association.
All righty then. Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other changes?
Anything else, then we will come back on the 22nd, according to the conversation that we've had today.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you so very much.
All right, thank you. And now I think that concludes our business, except for a closed session.
The Board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the items that are on the agenda, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff, the Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel. The Board authorized the defense indemnity of the sheriff and the county in the case of George Fetter versus Placer County Sheriff. The Board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business of the Board for this day. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready there, Ms. Ann?
Is the TV on?
And it will be in nine seconds. One, we're good.
The Board has returned from closed session where they discussed the closed session items listed on page five in the conference with legal counsel.